All right, well, I'm going to call to order. The May 15, 2019, special meeting to order. We're going to begin with public comment. Same rules of public comment apply as they normally do at our city commission meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak at public comment? Okay, I'm going to close public comment. This brings us to item number three, the budget transmittal letter. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me, before I start the transmittal letter, which was not included in your budget because I just finished writing it, and I mean that quite literally, within the last 15 minutes I finished writing it. We have three meetings scheduled. The agenda that Julie is preparing is designed with the hopes that we'll actually be able to finish in two, and the third one is really for extra if necessary. For the last few years, we have managed to finish in two, although last year there seemed to be a misunderstanding of how the process worked. And we had commissioners trying to make changes on the night of the public hearing, which required us to actually add back another special budget session to deal with that. So if you have things that you want to change, this is the time to tell us. And then we'll have it already be reflected in the numbers that we present to you at the time of the public hearing. With that, last night was left at your, Monday night was left at your places. I present you with the 2019-20 City Managers Recommended Budget for the City of Royal Oak. This is the 13th one I've done here. Three as Finance Director and ten as City Manager, and I fully expect this to be my last. Since this budget may mark an end to the Johnson era on Royal Oak, I thought it would be a good time to review. When I arrived here in 2005 as Director of Finance, the 2005-06 budget I inherited called for using every penny of fund balance in the General Fund, transferring the balances available in the Automobile Parking System Fund and the Ice Arena Fund to the General Fund. It did feature the city's first attempt at a multi-year projection. It was a two-year projection with an estimate for 2006-07 that showed a general fund deficit of $5.1 million. Pensions were significantly underfunded. Retiree healthcare was not funded at all. The city had not invested in any park improvement in years. I think at that time it was about 10 years. There was no local money at all spent on roads. Road repair and improvements were limited to what could be funded with money we get from the state from Act 51 of 1951. There was essentially no capital improvement program. Our fire truck fleet included three pumpers which could not be counted on to pump water when it was needed. Some of our critics, and there were many, just as there are now, were suggesting the city should file for bankruptcy or request an emergency financial manager from the state. Of note, this was the situation in 2005, well before the real estate crash, which would soon devastate our tax base and make a bad situation much, much worse. Today, the city's on a solid financial footing. We finished 17-18 with a general fund balance of $21 million and a public safety fund balance of $1.2 million. The General Fund is not being supported by transfers from other funds. Pensions for general employees and retiree healthcare were actually overfunded until the actuarial assumptions were changed this year. We have made significant improvements at 18 existing parks, upgraded signage at all parks, completed one new park, Eagle Plaza, have what will soon be our largest park, Normandy Oaks, under construction, and we, on Monday, we approved the designer for the new downtown park. We have spent over $2.4 million on capital improvements to existing parks in the past six years. This doesn't include money spent and money committed to the three new parks, and by "new" I'm including Eagle Plaza, which totals over $11.5 million. We're about halfway through a 10-year road improvement program, which will expend over $25 million of local money in addition to state road money on Royal Oak streets and roads. We've also recently seen an increase in state road money, and the new governor is promoting a plan which would further increase state contributions to the cities for local roads as well as fix the state roads. And this is very much needed. We've been averaging recently about $5 million per year in capital investment in water and sewer infrastructure improvements. We've replaced most of our fire trucks, including the three problem vehicles, although our largest and most expensive vehicle is about due for replacement, the Bronto. We have upgraded our vehicle fleet. We've replaced retired police cruisers that used to be used for building, engineering, and administrative vehicles with much more reliable and fuel-efficient compact SUVs. Most significantly, we're in the process of building a new police station and a new city hall to replace the present inadequate, dilapidated structures. City Hall should be completed in the spring of 2020 and the police station later that summer. A new parking structure, Center Street North, was opened last year, and another new structure, 11 Mile Road, is scheduled to open in about two and a half weeks, June 1st. In the fall of 2020, we will begin construction of a new downtown park on the site of the current city hall and police building. Julie, can you just page through that real quickly? I meant to have you start when I started talking about parks.
Hmm, it's funny.
Kind of shows you some of the things that we've done in parks and pictures of some of the improvements. We think we've done a lot with parks, and especially when you look at what's under construction and under design right now. This year, city staff will be focused on completing the construction projects. These are not really reflected in the 2019-20 general fund budget except its bond payments. They're often capital project funds. The budget is really a status quo budget. There's no positions, no new positions being recommended at this time, although several were requested by departments. We are not proposing anything that I would consider to be a major new program or activity, although there are a couple of significant capital expenditures. The biggest single new expenditure, or the biggest single increase in expenditures is the additional pension and retiree healthcare contributions required because of the new actuarial assumptions adopted by the retirement board. Overall, this will add $2.7 million to city expenditures in 2019-2020. Of that, $2 million will be in the General Fund and Public Safety Fund, which is effectively means it's all in the General Fund because the General Fund heavily subsidizes the Public Safety Fund, so any increase over there is going to ultimately be reflected in the General Fund. Change in question was a reduction in the assumed rate of return on investments from 7.75% to 7.5%. Personally, I don't believe the change was necessary, but members of the retirement board, including me, reluctantly acceded to the reduction because of pressure from the state on all systems to reduce their earnings assumptions. While it's very difficult to predict the future, and the future may not look like the past, that said, the stock market has consistently exceeded our old assumptions when you look at 20-year moving averages rather than short-term results, even during the Great Depression. Possibly the most significant new operating expenditure in this budget is the Axon video system for the police department. This is a family of equipment and software, including new in-car video cameras, officer-worn body cameras, next-generation tasers, interview room recording, and cloud-based digital evidence storage and management. Until now, we've been reluctant to embrace officer-worn body cameras because we felt the technology was inadequate. Issues with video storage and management, and there's a massive amount of video storage involved when you've got 79 sworn officers all making video recordings constantly. The inability of body cameras to fully capture critical incidents. They have to be turned on, and a lot of times they weren't turned on until after something important had already happened. And privacy were among our chief concerns. The system we're proposing addresses all of these concerns. It provides unlimited cloud-based video data storage and a robust system for retrieving, redacting, and managing data. The officer-worn body cameras are equipped with several automatic activation triggers that include the patrol car light bar. If you turn on the emergency flashers, the cameras turn on. Taser arming, you arm your taser, your camera turns on. If you unholster your sidearm, your camera turns on. Vehicle speed, you speed up, the camera turns on. If the vehicle's involved in a crash, the camera turns on. In addition, it's continuously recording in a 30-second loop, and actually, that's adjustable, so it can be a little bit longer if we want. So moments leading up to camera activation, which are often very critical, are also recorded. Body cameras allow for a high degree of accuracy and more transparency of critical incidents. They can result in higher levels of individual officer accountability. It's also important to note, however, that body cameras represent only one portion of the larger Axon system. This is a five-year subscription rather than a purchase. The subscription includes new taser sevens for the Patrol Division, replacement body cameras at the two-and-a-half-year point and at year five, and replacement in-car video cameras at year five. And that's been about our experience with the life expectancy of the in-car video systems. It's been about five years since we last replaced them. And if you've seen any of our in-car video, what we have already is very good, and this is going to be even better. Finally, the digital evidence management system, and this is the key component, really, that finally sold Corey on it, will save time for both road officers and support staff because of the intuitive video management system, and it will also eliminate the need to download and burn CDs. Next, we are proposing some additional park improvements this year with projects in Fulton, Huntington Woods, Sullivan, Winland Parks totaling $550,000 funded through the Community Development Block Program and $377,000 in General Fund for improvements to Bassett Park, Salter Center, and tennis courts. In addition, I would like the commission to also consider moving $600,000 to the Park Improvement Fund from the General Fund to allow for the trail system, nature area, and pedestrian bridge in Normandy Oaks to be completed this summer or next spring. These features will ultimately be paid for by Oakland County Parks over the next three years. This advance is not presently reflected in the budget document numbers, and that's basically just because Julie and I got our words crossed on this one. And I'll take full blame for that. With the opening of the new 11 Mile Road parking structure in two and a half weeks...
Just get that downtown park designed?
Oh, I'm sorry. The design of the downtown park will be completed during the upcoming fiscal year. Construction will not start till 2020, fall of 2020, because we can't start building the park until after the existing buildings are removed, and we can't remove them until the new buildings are done and we've moved into them. It's not reflected in this budget, at least not in the General Fund portion of this budget, but we will be spending at least $5 million on the downtown park. With the opening in two and a half weeks and maybe a few days earlier, I'm really trying to push them on that, a temporary shortage of parking in the northeast part of downtown will be alleviated. It'll be open for at least a year before Henry Ford Building is completed. When that building opens, it will be the largest single customer for the new structure. Kyle and I were arguing about this one beforehand, but I think we're going to need to readdress our parking rate policies at that time because I don't see very many of Henry Ford's customers being in the structure for more than two hours, which means you'd be giving away pretty much all of the parking in that structure. We're also, we are already looking at trying to come up with a solution to solve an issue that the library has with our existing parking policy as far as switching to a fixed rate after five. I'll be bringing something back to the commission, but we'll actually be implementing whatever we decide ahead of time. One other thing I want to mention, the new 11 Mile structure. At the point when it originally opens, we will only have the 11 Mile Road entrance open. The entrance off of Second Street will not be able to open until the construction on this other project is done. We will not have the traffic light yet at 11 Mile. We'll be four to six weeks more before we have the traffic light. So initially, vehicles exiting the structure will be required to turn right. When we have the traffic light, we'll also have the pedestrian crossing, and we will allow left turns. We are going to be proposing a tax reduction for the solid waste levy. We're proposing to reduce the voted 1 mil levy to .7016 mils, and we anticipate continuing to levy approximately that amount for the next three to five years. Basically, what we're trying to do is just draw down some fund balance there. After that, we see the need to return to 1 mil less, the Headley large reduction fraction. In addition, we're proposing to change our refuse collection program to use a 90-gallon wheeled container provided by the city instead of individual trash cans. These containers are just a larger version of the carts that we started using for recycling in 2017. I think you'll find them to be much more convenient for the user, better for the collection personnel who don't have to lift them because they'll have a tipping device on the truck. This will not be fully automated collection. We will still need somebody to come grab the can, wheel it over to the truck, line it up with a tipping device, and it'll tip it. With the amount of on-street parking we have in Royal Oak, we just simply cannot use the collection arm that reaches out and picks up the cans. It just won't work. I find these to be much more convenient for the user, better for the collection personnel, and most importantly, they will make it much more difficult for rodents and other animals to access our garbage. We think this will have a significant impact on rodent population, but we have no illusions that it will solve the problem. Rodents have many other sources of food besides garbage. We're showing this as a Plan 2021 expenditure, not a 1920 expenditure, but moving it forward into the end of 1920 should be possible because by then Russell will be retired.
Mr. Johnson. So is this something, you know, it's in the budget, but then would it also require discussion and approval at the table?
Oh, yeah.
Or some sort of ordinance revision or contract revision with SACRA?
It's going to require several approvals from the city commission.
Okay, so we'll be able to dig into that and fine-tune it and the reasoning for it and the necessity of it. But what it's putting in here just makes it possible for us to have that conversation.
Well, it's possible without, I'm just trying to tell you that that's something that's in...
In the budget.
That we would like to be talking about this year.
It's not in the budget. It's in the budget forecast, so when you look at solid waste forecasts in 2021, you'll see a very large increase in expenditure. So it just explains why, because it's $1.8 million.
Why does it go up? This is it.
We don't actually adopt a budget for enterprise funds. Nevertheless, I want to spend some time talking about water and sewer because there's several important things happening. First, you're well aware that we're working on a plan to separate stormwater from water and sewer. This is an outgrowth of the Schroeder case settlement. We were challenged in that case for using revenue from water and sewer billing based on water consumption to fund the stormwater debt paid for by the Oakland, through the Water Resources Commission of Oakland County. We have a consulting engineering firm working on a plan for creating a stormwater utility which would be funded by fees based on the amount of impervious area. Impervious area is the best proxy we've been able to come up with for actual stormwater flow off individual properties. We've actually got it down to the point right now where we have the data on the individual properties. We've had a successful flyover, and they've converted that data. But there are some complications which have delayed the process. We're currently aiming for implementation in January of 2020 if we can resolve those. If not, it'll be later. We have had several instances where water and sewer customers, I think everybody's aware of this too, have run up large bills. That's really happened because of two things. One, the water meter billing system doesn't provide usage information on a timely enough basis for people to identify and fix leaks. We currently only read meters quarterly, and it can take another month before the customer gets a bill, so they could have a leak for four months before they see the first evidence of it. And a lot of water can go through a leak in four months. We also have a second problem with the external remote reading devices, often underreporting, and discrepancies between the outside remote reading device and the actual water meter that we have traditionally always billed the customer for that difference whenever we became aware of it. The new system will provide the ability for customers to track their usage online. It'll also allow them to subscribe to a system that will provide them with real-time usage alerts via phone, text, or email at their option. This should go a long way towards solving the unintentional high-usage problems. It will also solve our problem with underreporting of remote reading devices. And it'll provide customers with real-time usage information they can use to manage their consumption. You know, if they want, they can see exactly how much water they put on their lawn or exactly how much water they put in their swimming pool or whatever use they have. We have not provided for this program yet in the budget numbers as we're still working on it, but that's something that will be coming. Huge concern we have right now is the state of Michigan's proposed lead and copper rules. As it now stands, the Department of Environmental Quality has issued a directive requiring cities and other operators of water supply systems to replace privately-owned service lines if the existing line is made of lead or non-continuous lead-jointed copper. That means individual sections of copper pipe that have been jointed together with a solder that was based on lead, as all solder was up until probably about 10 years ago. We have several concerns with this directive. First, we do not know which properties are impacted, and we have no way of knowing without a massive and costly inspection program. Second, these services are private property. These service lines are private property. The city does not own them. The city did not install them. Third, the cost will be astronomical, and it's presently uncalculatable. Fourth, we believe it's a clear violation of the Headley Amendment, which requires the state to fund state-mandated costs. Finally, this will do almost nothing to improve water quality. These types of water service lines have over time developed a protective coating inside that prevents lead contamination of the water flowing through them. SACWA regularly tests known locations where we know they have lead services and have proven these lines to be safe for use. This directive is clearly a misguided response to the Flint water crisis, which was largely caused by the state telling Flint they didn't need to add anticrosive chemicals to water supplied from the Flint River. A lawsuit's been filed by the Oakland County Water Resources Commission opposing these requirements. We should continue to support the WRC in these efforts to fight an unfunded, unnecessary, misguided requirement. State construction code fund, Building Department, is doing extremely well, perhaps too well. So we will separately be proposing, not as part of this budget, but we will be proposing a reduction in Building Department fees soon. We reduced these fees significantly a few years ago, but we're still bringing in more than we are spending. We do need to maintain higher fund balances here than in other funds because state construction code fund is entirely funded by permit fees and only permit fees, and this revenue can be extremely volatile. It wasn't all that long ago that we needed to subsidize this fund from the General Fund during the housing slump. That subsidy was repaid. Finally, I would like to ask the commission to consider making some changes to our strategic planning process. The existing process did start under my watch as Finance Director, and I think it's been a very effective tool. The commission annually spends a day, or more recently, several days considering what it wants to accomplish in the upcoming fiscal year. This has allowed us to include commission objectives in the budget. It's allowed us to actually budget for those objectives. It's made the process of bringing that to the commission much simpler, more straightforward when we're doing something to accomplish goals you've already established. However, it's really been focused on short-term goals. There've been a couple of long-term things that we've dealt with in it, but I think it's time that we really start looking at where we want the city to be in five years, in 10 years, in 20 years, and more. And with that, I give you the 2019-2020 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I think this might be one of your longest letters.
No, actually, it's one of my shortest.
That we've seen in a while. I guess it might be.
Last year, it was zero pages.
Yeah.
It's longer.
Any questions for Mr. Johnson? Commissioner Mace.
This is awesome. Thank you so much for this. This was, there was some exciting news, I feel like, in here that I hadn't known about, so I'm pretty excited. I do have a few questions. So on the parks improvements, the $2.4 million that we've spent on capital improvements, how much of that do you know was CDBG funds? Do you have a sense?
I don't have a breakout of that right now, although I can get it for you.
Okay, that'd be good. So you said that we changed our assumptions from 7.75 to 7.5, but the budget says 7.75 to 7.25. Is it 7.25?
2.5, sorry.
That's right. And then I wondered if we could hear a little bit about, I didn't understand what the police officer digital evidence management system that will save time and effort eliminates the need to download and burn CDs. What, what, what's that?
Now, Corey will talk about that more when...
Okay.
He can do it now if you'd like.
No, it's all right, if that's going to come back.
Or we can do it when we get to the police department, but it's the system for managing the videos.
Okay, all right. If that's going to come up again later, I'll wait for that. The $600,000 that you're proposing moving to the Park Improvement Fund from the General Fund, do you think that would enable us, we could still do that this year if we could expand it? It just seems kind of late to be saying, by the way, we also want you to do this stuff.
Well, we're going to be doing bids on the remainder of the project. I don't know whether for sure that we'll be able to get work done this summer or fall, but we certainly would be able to get it started next spring. What I'd like to do is try to complete that portion of the project that the county's going to be funding upfront rather than waiting and staggering it out over the three years that the county's actually going to be paying us.
Totally get that. And so that's what my next question was. When will we expect our first payment from them?
I think under the contract, the, I think it was October. Is that right, Julie?
I was involved. I can sign the contract.
Their fiscal year is different than our fiscal year, and it's in their next fiscal year, which starts later.
Okay. And that won't, our pain in advance isn't going to mess up that contract, I guess we need.
No, I've talked to their recreation director, and he said that should not be a problem.
Okay. So the $5 million that we're going to be, at least $5 million that we're spending on the downtown park, is that separate from or inclusive of the $5 million we're getting over time from the DDA?
Is the $5 million we're getting from the DDA.
All right, that's what I was talking about. So you said something, now I'm on the solid waste levy, so you said we're going to be reducing, you'd like to reduce from 1 mil to the .7016 mils, but then you think it will need to go back up. So I just wanted to... So I, I just wanted a little bit of clarity on how much we're actually paying out for what we're, so we're collecting, we collected a mil...
This year, right?
Or no?
This year will be slightly less than a mil because of Headley fraction.
Yeah, it's reduced by a million. We can go over that, we'll go, we can go over that shortly.
Okay. And, and, one thing you said is that you're gonna, for the next three to five years, draw down fun, this is just to draw down fund balance? I didn't understand what that meant, what you meant by that.
It, it just meant that we have enough fund balance there that we can reduce the millage for a while, but our annual expenditures are at approximately the level of what the full millage would generate, so we're gonna need to go to, back to that level. We won't be able to do it for a long period.
Okay, that's what I was...
You know, we, we could, we could reduce it by a larger amount for a shorter term, but I thought it was more reasonable to do it over a longer term.
Okay. And the last thing I don't understand is about the reducing the Building Department permit fees. Why, why, I mean, I understand you're saying like, hey, we're making out like bandits, but it, why, why do we need to reduce them?
I can only spend the money for enforcing the State Construction Code.
Okay.
I, I can't take that money for any other purpose. So there is absolutely no point to developing a, a fund balance in that fund that's larger than what we think we might need to get through the next recession.
Okay, gotcha.
I think there could be Headley issues there if you're making revenue, essentially making a tax without voter approval.
I'm not sure that it would fall under that level, but there, there's also an issue with, with charging fees that are more than the cost of providing service.
That's it. That's what it comes down to. That's the issue. And that's the, that's just as bad.
That's all. I'm done, I'm done.
Commissioner Levaser.
I do wanna dive a little bit more into the change in assumptions with regard to the retirement accounts, but if there's a section that Julie has planned, I will simply wait till then. She's nodding yes.
Yes, we have, um, we have a slide on, on the Retirement Trust, so we can address it at that time if we'd like.
Thank you.
Okay, James just handed me a note that says CDBG was 1.7 million, General Fund 0.7 million.
Okay, thank you.
I'm glad that's what the note says.
It's not like the notes I gave you.
Oh, no comment. Commissioner Dubutt.
Um, I don't know if we'll get more into the, the, the permit thing, because I totally understand, but to be clear, from those fees, we fund the staff that, that actually operate in that, a lot of the staff that actually operate in that department. Is that accurate?
We fully fund the staff that is on the building permit side. Okay, code enforcement is not really part of, of, code enforcement is a general fund expenditure, but, and that is funded out of, out of general revenues, but enforcement of the building permit side is entirely funded through building permit revenues.
Right. I remember we added a staffer or two to that a few years back, right?
Yeah. You, I think, I think it happened probably before any of you were on the Commission. We used to charge code enforcement to the building, the State Construction Code Fund, and we got dinged on the audit, probably, ooh...
For me.
11 years ago, maybe 12 years ago. It was when I was Finance Director, and we had to change it at that time.
Thanks. Commissioner Douglas?
So I'd like to kind of introduce a new thought here, actually tied to the final paragraph of Mr. Johnson's letter, and get you thinking about something. The Royal Oak Civic Foundation, which we have established, the, oh, sorry. The Royal Oak Civic Foundation, the, the board, current board members have been trying to decide what our purpose should be. And because the city is the owner of the foundation, we feel that the overall vision or priorities for the foundation should come out of the City Commission. As a nonprofit, one of the roles is to relieve the burden of government, and certainly that's an, an opportunity for the foundation to take on projects that fill gaps that our budget can't fill. Certainly, the foundation is going to continue to support the, what I call the, the legacy programs, the, the former Roots projects that it has always supported, both those that are of the city, that is, the animal shelter, and those that are not entirely or not at all of the city, like the Nature Society. But beyond that, we need to know where our priorities should be. And so what I'm asking is that as we go through this budget process, let's have in the back of our heads where the gaps are, what things that, you know, need to be funded or that we want to do more of, or that we want to do better, where we simply don't have the money in the budget. And the caveat here is that those needs have to be qualified charitable activities. And as you think of them, I would say, think of things that also appeal to foundations or individuals who are writing donation checks, because obviously those are the two of the biggest sources that we'll be looking to for funding. I do think, and actually, the, the Foundation Board has, has said that, you know, you may need, we as a Commission may need more than just, you know, talk at the table during a meeting about those priorities. That may take the form of a Commission work session, or we may roll it into our strategic planning process later in the fall or the first part of next year, especially if we are going to take a much more long-range look for the city's needs as a whole. That might be the appropriate place for that discussion. But for the time being, just sort of keep an eye on the budget and start to think about those areas where the foundation could play a role.
Good point, Commissioner Douglas. Anything more on the transmittal letter? Commissioner Perush?
I just have a follow-up question. When you say that the projects that are identified or, or the ideas that are thrown out have to have a quote-unquote charitable purpose, does that mean that the actual grant has to be to a nonprofit, to a 501(c)(3), or can it come to fund a, a project that the city would be doing if, if the city had the money? And it would be funded and actually contracted through the city?
It's more a matter of what activities are, have charitable appeal. For example, some of our economic development programs may well qualify for charitable donations. There are foundations out there that do support economic development projects, but not many. There are other things that we do, though, that have a much broader appeal, I mean, you know, your parks, your animal shelter, and so forth. So it's, it's, yes, our functions will mostly qualify for expenditures by the foundation, but let's look for those that are appealing to other funders. It's my, and that doesn't answer your question, does it?
Um, it helps. It helps. And as we go through the, as we go through the budget, if something pops into your head and it occurs to you, would you mention it? Because in a situation like this, I learn better by example. You know, here's an example of something that would possibly work in this framework that you're suggesting.
Mm-hmm.
This type of project, or this kind of project.
Mm-hmm.
So, the, I think that would be helpful. At least to me, it would be helpful.
Okay.
Okay. I think we're gonna hand it over to Ms. Rudd.
Thank you.
Budget overview highlights.
Okay. I am not going over every page of the budget document.
No!
I know. Sorry to disappoint. But I'm going to go over things that I think might be of interest to the Commission, and if I skip something, just let me know and we can cover that page as well. But, um, just quickly, I just wanna mention, there is also an executive summary that is on page, begins on page 14 through 16. Basically, it's, it's very, very general, trying to sum things up. I don't put a lot of discussion into those because we have a lot of dedicated millages and dedicated funding source, enterprise funds. So to me, it doesn't make sense to look at things in totals across all funds. It just doesn't matter, 'cause we can't take revenue in most situations and use it for other funds. So, um, I'm just gonna skip over a lot of that all-fund summary very quickly and not really do a lot of discussion on those pages. Then, page 19 has the vision and mission statements. And right after that, page 20 through 26 has your goals and objectives that you adopted, I believe, in January after your numerous strategic planning sessions. And then, um, beginning on page 27 is the budget resolution, resolutions. This is what we are recommending for the City Commission to adopt on June 10th, assuming there's no changes that come from the budget work sessions. Let's see. Oops, sorry. Then, I'm skipping the budget calendar and the organizational chart and get into the budget highlight section under policies.
What page is that, Julie?
Actually, you know what? Let me skip through, um, let me go back to the resolution. There, there's a couple of things I, I should, I should probably go over. The first eight resolutions looked no different than the current year's fiscal year. That's page 21 is where the budget resolution starts. Sorry for taking you back there.
No, that's the Commission's goals and objectives.
Oh, sorry about that.
27.
At 27. Okay, the only recommended change is the fiscal policies. Okay, what we're gonna ask is that you adopt and amend the fiscal policies, and that is mainly the fund balance policy. So attrition, capital assets, capital improvements, debt management, investments, retirements, and the fund self-supporting policies are recommended to stay the same, and those start on page 36. The fund balance policy, where there's a recommended change, is on page 39. They have it up here on the screen. In red is the recommended change, and it should be in italics under number one on page 39, where you see the number one. And basically, it reads, "To ensure proper stewardship of the City of Royal Oaks' finance, financial resources by maintaining the city's ability to," and number one says, "meet liquidity requirements for current and long-term obligations." The recommendation is to, to add the language in red, "by considering economic cycles of municipal revenues and expenditures in the estimated budget forecasts." And the recommend, the reason for that recommendation is that these budgets have been providing the forecasts, the five-year forecasts, and the, for instance, the General Fund shows an operating deficit. And so that the City Commission take that in consideration when looking at its current year, um, uh, fund balance, and that it will be utilizing that if, 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 you know, things aren't any different than what's shown in the forecast, meaning if revenues don't change or if expenditures don't change, that that should be a consideration when perhaps adjusting the millage rate to bring in less revenue before doing that, that...
So, so if you say you know, like, in two years, you're gonna have a big $10 million expenditure for something, that you don't deplete the budget in the previous years, knowing that you have to make an expenditure?
Correct.
And when you look at the statement that says at the bottom, "Be it resolved that it shall be the policy of the City of Royal Oak to maintain an unassigned fund balance in the General Fund equal to 10% of budget expenditures, but not more than 25% of budgeted expenditures," are, are you basically saying when we look at this, we're considering the five-year budget?
Correct.
You know, as far as, you know, we're not, and I think we'd all agree, we don't want that budget, you know, in, in five years to show like a 200% fund balance if there's no expenditures, but what you're saying is, we gotta be, because of the ups and downs, that when we look at that number, that's not an absolute number year to year, but that's more of a 10 to 25% over a five-year planning period.
And I believe that's the purpose of a forecast.
Yeah, yeah.
So...
We do it in our households.
That's why we're using it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner Macy.
So as I talked about at length last year and sent everyone some lovely charts about, the problem is that the five-year out forecasts are extraordinarily conservative and have been ridiculously off for the past 10 years. And I can bring the chart up again, but it's, it's, even if you look at last year, what the five-year forecast was and what it ended up being, it's, it's been quite a bit off. So I'm not, I'm not saying that I'm standing against the language and that we shouldn't, we shouldn't be looking into the future, but I'm saying that specifically putting the words in here that we're looking at the budget forecast, there, there will always apparently be a time that we're gonna be going down the budget forecast below 25%, because the budget forecast is extraordinarily conservative.
Yeah. And I, and I see where you're coming from, Commissioner Macy, but I would argue that that's part of the forecasting process, not part of the budget policing process. You know what I mean? That argument would be better discussed in like, hey, why are you assuming, you know, that expenditures are gonna quadruple in year four? You know, it seems like they'll only double. So I would, I would say that the policy, you know, here makes sense, but then if we have concerns about the forecast, then we would say these forecasts are too conservative. We need to take a different approach. Sorry, Commissioner Macy, I interrupted you. Do...
Well, I was just gonna, I'm just responding to you, though, but, um, so I, point taken, except that as a City Commissioner, policy is, is my domain and budget forecasting is not. I don't think Ms. Rudd would take very kindly to it if my, if I walked over to her and said, "Well, you're doing this all wrong. Why don't you do it my way instead?" Because I don't know the first thing about budget forecasting. But I know from policy-wise, looking back at how it has, how it has played out over time, I can see that if we were to take this, if we were, if we adopted this and we're never to, um, and we're looking five years out in terms of whether or not we're gonna be at 25% of budget expenditures, we would never be there, even though in fact, we have been for like eight years running.
I'll let Ms. Rudd respond, and I'll get to you, Commissioner Levaser.
Um, over the last two years, I've mentioned during the budget work sessions, that I have shored up the conservatism on both the revenue and expenditure side, and it is, um, of course, it's conservative. It is in no way to the level it was before, because our revenues, we have to be, have to be reasonably assured, so they're gonna come in a little better. The expenditures have been shored up as well. They are not to the level. In addition, we were budgeting, like, for instance, for all the police officers, all the vacancies, or all the positions to be filled, and they were not for a very, very long time, but we budgeted for them. So that was a significant, um, yeah, yeah, difference. And, you know, so, but I will say, for instance, like, on some of the revenues, I mean, they, they are within, you know, very, very small fraction percentage off, basic, basically relative to the budget. So they are, they're not as even close to as conservative as they were, and they're, they're pretty close. In fact, we're gonna get, um, we're gonna talk about real quickly in a slide coming up, the cable franchise fee. We bring in about 1.2 million dollars in, in that line item. And, um, as you know, people are not subscribing to cable as they have in the past, and we're already seeing a decrease. That's a 1.2 million dollar possible loss to the General Fund that really is sitting there. So to me, that's not conservative. And there's many people, such as James, that is hearing that we could lose that entirely very quickly because of some positions they've taken on getting credits, the different cable companies getting credits, what they pay to this, or the benefit they provide to the city to offset the revenue they pay us. So if that's true, that's 1.0 million dollars, 1.2 million dollars, excuse me, gone from the General Fund, very quickly.
And I'd also argue too, that even in this budget, we saw how the Retirement Fund took a, you know, from an actuarial study, took a return on investment of 7.75 to 7.5, whatever, it was a quarter point, resulting in 2.7 million. So we do get some whoppers that are just totally unexpected, and I can tell you, a number of years ago, and we fought like hell against the state, and we got some traction, but when they decided to expand I-75, all of a sudden, they said, "Well, yeah, why don't, why don't communities match?" And that would've cost us 4 to 5 million dollars. Thank goodness, we avoided that catastrophic hit to our budget. I mean, that just would've been, that would've, I mean, look at what our road millage is doing for 4 million. So, um, these things do pop up, you know? So, um, these things do pop up, you know, and, um, they don't always, you know, rear their head in the same places, but, um, you know, there is, uh, there is, it's hard to predict those things, uh, but something like the cable franchise fees, okay, that's easy that we can do, the police officers that we're hiring, okay, we have to budget because we are working like heck to hire and get up to seventy-nine sworn officers, but if we're a little short, you know, ten short for a year, yeah, you're gonna have some, some windfall on the budget. But it's a good discussion to have and I think, Commissioner Macy, you made good points. And I think that, um, we have to, I mean, we're always been laser-focused on, you know, what's happening this year, but the reality is, is when we look at these budget items, I would argue that all of us should be also looking and making sure that we're paying a little extra closer attention to year two, three, four, and five out, because a lot of work on, on Ms. Rudd's part has, uh, gone into that in the department heads and we need to, to look at those and, and question and challenge. Because we may actually have things in there that we, that, you know, are risks and they're not accounted for, goes the other way too. Commissioner Levasseur.
Going back to the, uh, proposed changes to the fund balance policy, I just wanted to make sure that this is it, what's on our screen right now in red? That's the only thing that you're recommending at this time?
Um, for the general fund.
For the gen, for the, for the fund balance policy that, that's on page thirty-nine?
Only change to policies, right?
No, there's another change to a policy that's on the next slide. But for the general fund, this is the only change.
That's for page thirty-nine, so.
Correct.
Okay.
And except for the language that says recommended, add the language in red, that's right. Sorry, it's one of those nights.
Yeah. So then, on page forty, this is the state construction code fund. Uh, the community development director is, um, recommending, uh, two changes to, uh, this policy. The one in italics is in the first paragraph and I have it in red up on the screen. He would like to add, um, the language, uh, and to ensure that the services paid are completed. And then in the second paragraph, it's already been eliminated, but in blue, it used to say.
Let me interrupt just for a second to explain that. When somebody pulls and pays for a building permit, especially when we're talking about a large project, it's very often that we will get paid for it far in advance of actually doing all our inspection work. And sometimes that occurs in over two or sometimes even three fiscal years, but all of the revenue came in upfront and you can't allow that to distort, uh, how you're viewing your, your balances, even though on paper, it's gonna look like it. You have, you have to take that into account.
In every other accounting world, you wouldn't be able to recognize that revenue until you actually provided the service, except for governmental accounting.
And were required to.
Yeah. Oh, Commissioner Dubout.
So, so I understand you're saying before you would calculate whether or not we're at fifty percent of expenditures, you would remove those expenses that we anticipate coming next fiscal year or the one after that, because we know that's work that's outstanding.
We have to do it.
Makes sense to me.
Okay.
Okay, and then, and.
Sorry, Commissioner Macy.
Sorry.
Were you talking, are you talking about the blue now or did you finish?
Um, I was going to talk about the blue.
Okay.
And then what's already been, uh, removed, because this is the proposed policy, um, in that second paragraph, uh, near the end, um, it, uh, he's recommending to eliminate, um, but not more than a hundred and fifty percent of budgeted expenditures. So the policy would, um, only include, uh, the language not less than the fifty percent of budgeted expenditures. So the ceiling's removed.
Go, go for it.
So, and to clarify, this is what Mr. Johnson said earlier, this is a fund that we can't spend on other things.
That's correct.
So we can cap the rates to make sure that we're staying within a target, but if more comes in and we have more than this hundred and fifty percent, it's not like we can get rid of it, we can't do something with it. We just have to lower rates to slow down the rate at which that fund's accumulating. So that's why we would eliminate this, 'cause what would happen if you have more than a hundred and fifty percent, we can't just spend it, right?
Right, that's correct.
Okay. It'd be weird at some point if you had to offer permits for free or pay people.
Or pay them back.
You pulled a permit, here's a hundred and fifty dollars.
It makes sense to address it by slowing the rate of the revenue, the revenues coming in by lowering the, the fee structure. That makes sense.
Commissioner Macy.
I was just gonna ask, because this happened already, like, are we, because you said we're doing too well in this fund. Is this, are we already near or at this ceiling?
We're beyond the ceiling.
We need to do a reduction.
Gotcha.
Question about that.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Our next session will go through the fund balance and revenues and expenditures.
So excited.
We're just, I know, suspense. Okay, and then, um, millage rates, that's in the trend section. That is, the chart, the nice chart is on page fifty-seven. A bit of a history here, um, so as Mr. Johnson mentioned earlier, overall, there's a total millage decrease and, um, down to eighteen-point-one-one-eight-seven, that's over a half a mil decrease, is exactly, uh, point-five-zero-four-seven. And most of that, uh, a quarter of a mil is due to the local solid waste, uh, millage reduction. Then we have two debt mills that, uh, we are reducing because we're just basically collecting to pay the debt payment. Our taxable values are higher, so we could reduce that millage. And then on the balance of the millages, it's due to the headly, uh, factor reduction. Um, we had a headly factor of point-nine-eight-nine-three, so that's what we had to reduce our maximum allowable levies for, uh, nineteen-twenty. Um, that inflationary factor that we are allowed to, um, uh, receive is, uh, two-point-four percent. So that's what, uh, that was the factor used when we had to, uh, calculate the, uh, headly reduction for Royal Oak. The DDA millage is recommended to be the same at one-point-six-zero-two-one mills. There was no reduction, headly reduction factor on that. So what that means is that, uh, values of existing properties did not increase more than two-point-four percent.
We're talking about specifically in the DDA district?
Correct. Yep, new values were about thirty-five million dollars that went on the roll, but existing values did not increase over the inflationary factor, so there's no reduction.
Commissioner Dubout.
All right, so we're projected eighteen-point-one and change mills next year, and that's including all city operations, it's public safety and everything's in there.
Correct, all city mills, mhm.
I just think it's worth noting, you know, all day, Royal Oak taxpayers, like, home site taxpayers are paid about forty-one mills and less than half of that is actually for city services. I think people have it in their heads that when they pay that tax bill, that that's all money going to the city, but actually far less than half of that, uh, tax bill is, is funding city operations, we're only at, you know, the eighteen-point-one. Worth noting.
It's been noted.
Thank you.
Can I get just a little clarification, Julie?
Sure.
You mentioned some of these were, are reduced because we simply don't need as much money generated, uh, and I believe you mentioned the, uh, solid waste being one example?
Correct.
And, and some of these are being reduced simply because of the headly rollback. I just wanna make a notation which is which on these items.
Yes, um, okay, so solid, the solid waste at two-point-six-two-seven-two, there's two components there, whoops. There's the state levy and the local levy. So the loc, uh, the local, that's where we're reducing it by a quarter of a mil. Okay. And then the, I'm gonna skip around, there's a reason for it, you'll see in a couple of seconds. The fire debt retirement, that's going down to point-two-two-seven-zero. Okay, you see that? Okay, um, that's because we only collect enough to pay our debt and because taxable value increased, we can lower it and that's bringing in enough money to pay our debt payment. And that's the same situation for the very last one, the drain debt, the one-point-zero-eight-five. We, we're only pulling in enough to pay that, uh, those, that debt service for the year and, um, and then, sorry, the publicity as well, which is the second from the top, it's point-zero-one-six-nine. Basically, we can only bring in up to fifty thousand dollars so that there's no real headly reduction factor placed on that. The balance of them are reduced by headly.
Okay, so that would be library, public safety, and local road.
In general.
In general.
Mhm.
And what is the fire debt again? Why did that one go down?
Um, because we only need to collect as much as, uh, the debt service payment is and because taxable values increased.
Okay.
We can, we can lower the millage.
Okay.
Commissioner Dubout.
All day, we're looking at a half mil reduction in city collections. Yeah, lower it for that.
Yes, goodness. Page sixty. Hawkeye Macy, uh, pointed this out, um, Royal Oak's in the wrong spot there, uh, didn't get resorted, um, I don't know why. But, um, here, this shows, um, all of the cities in the county, excludes villages and townships. And what you see, Royal Oak in the green and Pontiac's right to the left, you gotta switch those two. But basically, um, Royal Oak, if this is levied, the, the one, the millage is proposed, um, then it will be, um, the Royal Oak millage will be, um, lower than the average and the median for the counties. Again, cities only, not villages and town, or, excuse me, not townships. And then the neighboring communities that actually touch Royal Oak are in blue. And you can see that, um, there's only three other communities that would have a lower millage rate. I also need to add that these are the other communities' millage rates for the current year, because we don't know them for next year yet, 'cause a lot of them haven't even adopted. So we'll update this in July, but basically what we're doing is we're comparing apples and oranges a little bit here. It would be Royal Oak's nineteen-twenty millage rate compared to, um, current municipalities' um, rate. So.
Commissioner Dubout.
Then relatively, we're right in the middle of the pack for Oakland County cities, we're not a high-tax city, I mean, answer.
Yeah, we are lower than the average and the median, so.
Good to know. Thank you.
Kinda going back and forth a little bit, sorry, in the front here, but I think we'll, uh, we'll be just marching forward once we get out of the front section. Um, taxable values on page fifty-four and fifty-five. This is total taxable values for next year, which were as of December thirty-first of eighteen. They increased six-point-two-nine percent. Residential values increased five-point-six. Industrial increased eleven-and-a-half. Personal property increased three percent. And then commercial increased less than one percent. Uh, page forty-seven, this is all funds, yes.
Just before you go there, looking at fifty-four, just wanna make sure, this number's taxable value or assessed value?
Taxable value.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, uh, page forty-seven, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time again on these all-fund summaries because to me, it doesn't matter because we're restricted in how we spend our revenues and expenditures. But I just wanna mention that, um, total revenues are decreasing, um, less than one percent, total expenditures are increasing one-point-six-six percent. And basically, I just kinda wanna throw out the, this information because it's not addressed in all of the orange boxes when we talk about the significant notes, 'cause I don't wanna repeat it over and over. But I just wanna, you know, so you're, so you have in mind when you're looking at the personnel costs increasing, like, here across the board, almost fifteen percent. We have the two-and-a-half percent wage and contractual wage increases in there. And then we have a lot of new staff members going through their steps, their merit steps to get to the top of their, uh, their, um, um, wait, their steps, so the ranges, thank you. Um, medical's increasing, we have an eight percent increase on illustrative rates and then the ten percent component going from the ninety, going from the eighty-twenty to the ninety-ten. And then as Mr. Johnson mentioned earlier, the pension and OPEB contribution increasing two-point-seven million dollars, which is thirty-three percent.
So thirty-three percent of that, a third of that fifteen, wait a minute, when you say thirty-three percent.
No, it's increasing thirty-three percent.
It's increasing thirty-three percent. Okay.
Yeah.
So it's not a third of the fifteen, it's just that independent amount going up by thirty-three, okay.
But it is in that fourteen, it is in that fourteen percent?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
So I will not repeat this as, as we're going through all the funds and all the cost centers, what personnel, what I'm gonna do is mention.
Basically applies to everything.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I'm just gonna mention why personnel costs are increasing, that is not this reason, 'cause sometimes they increase for another reason. And I'll mention that.
We had increases in pension contributions, we had increases in medical and, um, and we had increases in medical for the switch from eighty-twenty to ninety-ten, and we had a general, let's say, two-and-a-half percent reduction, which is, you know, part of our negotiated contracts with, and, and people moving up in steps. You know, we're, we're actually retaining people, which isn't bad, and people are getting paid more, it means they're sticking around and they're more experienced and, and that's part of those numbers.
And I just wanna remind everyone, um, when we give people a two-and-a-half percent increase, um, especially on the second-tiered people, the people in the defined contribution plans, um, we're also adding two-and-a-half percent to the contributions that we're making for them, because it's based on wages. So all our wage-based benefits, when we give a two-and-a-half percent increase, those expenses go up two-and-a-half percent as well.
Well, which is actually an interesting question too, um, I mean, from, we're, and maybe just to remind us all, there's no inflationary, uh, factors, uh, in these numbers as well, is there, as far as when we look at past numbers or we look at future numbers, we consider inflation?
For personnel, just the con, the contractual numbers?
Well, just in general, any of these numbers, so if I go back and I'm looking at a number from two thousand and fourteen to now and I see that, you know, they're different, well, you know, if it's been sixteen percent increase in, you know, inflation, two percent every year, whatever it is over the time, you know, compounded, um, those aren't incorporated in any of these numbers, those are real numbers to real numbers, actuals to actuals.
Yes, exactly, not adjusted for inflation. And I will say, like, for instance, like, the supplies line, for most of our supplies lines, when we're talking about conservative budget, I have zero increases in the forecast. And, and, you know, I, of course, I have, you know, two-and-a-half percent for personnel, you know, maybe a five percent for medical, um, but things like supplies and, um, and all those other operating type accounts that are non-personnel, virtually zero for almost everything. Capital, I take from the capital improvement fund, so if you're interested in seeing the details of that, you can look at the aggregate spreadsheet. So just kinda getting back into, so you have an idea of how that forecast looks and how it's, you know, not really super conservative, um, it's slightly, but not significantly.
Commissioner Levasseur.
Just, just wanna clarify this, and you may have said this already, so forgive me if you did, uh, but looking at the personnel services and the increase there, uh, part of that is the increase due to the change in assumptions, the extra two-point-seven million?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dubout.
I don't think you said this, I'm just looking at the actual, so, under other from revenues, you know, we've fifty-five million in seventeen-eighteen and that goes down to eight-point-six and eight-point-one in, you know, the coming, the next years. Is that from the bonding to close out our pension?
Yeah, that's why I don't look at this stuff, because it just, it's, you see these numbers and what goes into them, you just kinda need the details, so that's, I like to work more.
That other category, what'd we do back then?
Let's do that again.
Well, 'cause it makes the total revenues for the, from year to year, it looks like we took this huge drop in revenue. But that was the one time bonding that we did, okay.
Okay, uh, page forty eight, again, uh, just real quick, I don't wanna spend a lot of time on these. Total revenues, uh, cross all funds, one hundred seventy five point eight million dollars. And then if you're curious, again, to see them across all funds. Summary information is here. Page forty nine, the expenditure summary information is here. Total expenditures recommended, uh, two hundred and nine point one million dollars. We're gonna get into uh the details in the next two or three evenings. Page forty six. Is the full-time staffing table. This budget is recommending three hundred and thirty four full-time positions. That is down one from the current year. And that is the request for the elimination um of the network engineer in the IT department. And we have a slide on that later this evening, we can talk a little bit uh more on that. This budget also includes six months of overlap for the DPS director. As Mr. Johnson mentioned earlier, uh, Mr. Rassell is retiring. So um, this is the request to um have some training overlap for maybe four to six months. And uh, miss, miss, the DPS director is allocated over numerous um different funds. So you don't see big, big jumps, but it's a little bit of, a little bit of an increase.
Let me add, the, the reason I think we need some overlap is because Mr. Rassell's responsibilities are considerably broader than most DPS directors. He's involved in a lot of things that, that whoever we get coming in has probably never had to deal with.
Commissioner Prush.
And when is Mr. Rassell re- retiring?
I think the date he's given me is likely to be January.
Of twenty twenty?
Yes.
Okay.
Right before the snowstorms start to hit.
Speak while you can, right?
And we run out of salt or.
We run out of salt.
So uh, in our strategic planning, we spent some time talking about the need for a facilities manager, which I see here was not funded. And at the time, we theorized that there might be enough work being done in other departments by people doing facilities unqualified. People doing facilities management, that this would indeed be a savings. How much analysis did you put into that decision?
Not a whole lot. Basically, I decided this needed to be a pretty basic budget this year. And then I did not want to be adding any more new personnel.
Do you think in the coming fiscal year, you, you or someone might have some time to do a more detailed analysis to see if indeed that's true?
Someone might.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Macy.
Same question about the so-called parking czar, that we had talked about that too and thought that there was money for that that would come specifically out of parking fund, was that considered?
Actually, we, we've dealt with the parking through a part-time position. And that person actually has already started.
Is the title czar? Well, that person started.
He gave you orders, he delivered.
Really into the title.
I really want the title.
Yes, uh, it's a parking systems manager.
Boring.
The acronym doesn't fight, quite fit out to czar, but we.
We, we um hired an individual, it's on, it's a part-time employee. And uh, eventually they'll be introduced, but we really wanted to, him to get the opportunity to get his feet wet, cause there's a lot of different things he's getting involved in. So far, so good. We had a ticket complaint today that he's gonna be following up on and kinda bring that, that issue uh to resolution, so.
We have fun with titles like that, too.
Creativity overwhelms me.
Tell Julie Lyons-Brooker that, that her title is Grant Poo Bah and Energy Czar.
Oh, that's good.
All right, Ms. Rudd, back to the reality.
Okay, um, and then there's three uh positions that you'll see in the department requested budget. You'll see a little bit of variance um to the city manager's budget and that was, like you mentioned, facilities manager, accountant three and appraiser. I do want to mention that relative to the peak, recent peak, uh, two thousand five, two thousand six. The three hundred and thirty four positions is thirty two fewer um than we had budgeted in that year.
Then what year?
Oh, five oh six. Which is not in your, we don't, we don't have enough room to go back that far, but. Okay, um, the executive summaries on page fourteen and fifteen, um, but I'm just pulling out the capital out of that narrative here. Just wanna mention summary, some summary information, there's forty five point two million dollars in capital improvements, about half a million in the general fund. Major streets, little over three million, local streets, five point eight, Normandy Oaks. Possibly two point four, um, if we get that far. The Rock Project, um, twenty four point five million, water and sewer, five point nine million, motor pool, two point three. Fire Department, a hundred and thirty eight thousand, um, auto parking, a hundred thousand, that's basically just some leftover work for the parking structure for the eleven mile structure. Farmers Market, forty eight thousand, and then the IT Department, uh, two hundred and sixty thousand. And then when we get to those cost centers, we'll go more into um what makes up uh those dollar amounts.
I have a question.
Commissioner Prush.
Um, in the fire department, one hundred and thirty eight thousand, that doesn't include apparently the one fire vehicle that uh Mr. Johnson suggested it might be.
That's correct.
It's not planned for this year, but it's one that will be coming up on us.
I see.
Although, although actually there will be consideration given to replacing it with something other than a similar vehicle.
Okay, yeah, cause I know that stuff evolves too. It, they look a lot different now than they did.
Mm hmm.
Ten years ago, so, okay, thank you.
There is a large um apparatus um in the motor pool for the fire department in the motor pool fund. I'm not sure if it's the exact one you're referring to.
No.
It's E one or something like that.
It's not the Bronto. The Bronto to actually replace that would probably be in the area of, I would guess, at least two million, uh, maybe more. I think we paid, I think it was one point two five million for it.
Commissioner Macy.
I, I just, I have a couple of questions for Don, maybe, I know we'll probably get to this later, but while we're looking at all the major capital improvements. Uh, one thing we had heard quite a bit about, um, well, especially related to the Normandy Oaks development was maybe doing some more for the golf course. And I wondered if that had come up as a possibility, as something that we could put some budget into this year. There seems to be quite still a bit of need there and um some unmet, met demand.
We, we did approve a project uh for cart paths and some paving of parking areas uh at the golf course already.
But that was last year, right?
That was a few months ago.
Which fiscal year?
This fiscal year.
Okay, um, and so I think what people, a lot of people I've heard talk about is the clubhouse could definitely use some attention. Has anyone been talking to you about that, is that? No?
Not really.
The other thing I was wondering about was the um parking at the senior center. Which the parking lot is um not great and could maybe use some attention and that seems to be an S, specific city property that perhaps we don't wanna wait long on getting the parking lot repaved when it needs it. I'd sort of been talking to Greg and hoping, but I, it's quite a big expense, I know, but I wondered if we had even had it priced out.
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
So that's all I have on the trends and highlights section. If everyone's okay, we can move to the gen- general fund, um, that starts on page sixty nine. The first significant notes are on page seventy one. And um, total general fund revenue excluding transfers in is budgeted to increase less than one percent or two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. And this is mostly due to increased tax revenue and state shared revenue. Tax revenue is increasing four percent or seven hundred and eighty two thousand dollars. A state shared revenue is increasing approximately four percent, which is two hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars. Uh, these increases are netted against some decreases and um the most significant is the indirect cost revenue that we collect from the um user funds um in the city. Um, that's declining about three hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars and mostly due to um the way we are allocated to un- allocating the unfunded liability. When we bonded, it turned into a debt payment. And so what happened when that cost turned into a debt payment, it pulled, we pulled it out of personnel costs. And that, the personnel costs are what we distribute in that indirect costs from the other user departments. One of my um objectives for this current year, which I did not get to, um, and I have it as an objective for next year. Is to look at all of our um allocation methodologies for potential change. But in the meantime, we have um this, uh, this reduction. And then we have in reimbursements and grants, a, a decrease of a hundred and ninety seven thousand, those were uh one-time only uh grant revenues. And then here, I just wanna mention again, um, the cable franchise fees. I have them going down about four percent a year because that's what they've been doing the last few years. However, um, I have it going down four percent this year and then also in the forecast, but I just wanna make you aware, um, this may not be enough. So as I was mentioning before, um, James was mentioning how um it could go down significantly. Because they are trying to get a significant credit um against their revenues. So then that five percent um really is, is going to be multiplied by a very small number. And he's, James is almost thinking it's, it's, he's hearing it's, it may even go away. So I have not heard that, but.
So enough there to give you consternation?
Yeah.
So the cable, the cable franchise fees are not restricted funds, they just go into the general fund?
Um, correct, we also receive a peg fee and that is restricted.
That's what I was thinking of.
We pay out half of that and then uh we keep half of the peg fee and that is restricted. If you look at the CAFR, you'll see that restriction there.
Got it, thanks.
What, what is it used for?
Usually WROK type items, qualifying items, more like capital type things, um, equipment.
And the half we pay out is for community media network.
Yes, and James belongs on that, uh, on that board and perhaps that's where he heard about the bad news, the potential bad news.
I have a question. And why is that? Is it a contractual issue or is it a state law issue that's gonna change? Is it a regulatory issue?
It's a regulatory issue, it's um an FCC ruling that came down, I think, last year. That basically allows for cable companies to count um the public access channels, um, different, different equipment that is used as part of the franchise fee.
Okay. All right, thanks.
On page sixty two, just real quick, um, just, this shows the historic fact, uh, nineteen ninety eight uh state shared revenue amounts. We're gonna, well, we're anticipating an increase of about two hundred and twenty seven thousand based on the state's posted projections for next year. But um, just wanna point out, that is, and this is not adjusted for inflation. Almost one point six million dollars less than what we were receiving in fiscal year ninety nine, two thousand.
Commissioner Dubout.
I think it would be impactful to see this adjusted for inflation. See in real dollars what we've lost in the ability to deliver to residents, state revenue sharing was kind of a promise from the state. That's been shredded over time and left us, left us holding the bag, which is why you see millages all over the state passing just to sustain basic services. And so this is a really, really important point for people to see how far the state's investment in cities has dropped over the last twenty years. And I would argue too that the things that we spend money on go outside or are much higher than inflation. We've seen construction costs, for example, far outpace what inflation has been over the same period. So the things that we're, we're not buying bread and milk and all these things as a city, the things that we're spending money on that would be attributed to these funds are things that, you know, even beyond inflation, you know, exasperate the problem even more. And we pay into it.
Buy an awful lot of concrete. But when we are building buildings.
Um, page sixty four, just real quick, um, for many, many years. We had significant loss of um interest revenue. Things are looking up, our interest rates are, that we're earning on, um, our balances are increasing. We're probably almost up to uh three percent. Our projected for next year is a nine hundred thousand dollars. What I just wanna point out, I, I keep the fiscal year seven, eight on this graph because that is our more, I call it recent uh peak. And we were um earning almost one point five million dollars just in the general fund. That helps us supplement operations, so that is another reason when you're thinking about fund balances and where you want them. The lower they are, the less we're gonna bring in interest income to supplement our operations, so.
Give this some perspective, we're talking about going up to three percent. At one time in my career, when I was a municipal treasurer, uh, I was actually able to get twenty two percent on thirty day money.
Did you get on a plane to get that check cashed too?
We did before.
Commissioner Prush.
I remember those days and so it, back in those days, you needed to have an exceptional relationship with a local bank so that you could transfer funds back and forth. On that basis, put it in for thirty days, then take it out as you need it and so on. Do we have that kind of relationship now or are we dealing differently with, you know, funds that come in every day to the treasurer's office? I mean, they use, they used to physically carry them over to the bank.
That we wire.
You don't do that now, I know you don't do that now, but it, it, are the relationships, important relationships with financial institutions just as important as they used to be? For these types of reasons?
Um, yes, they are, uh, we have to keep our investments diversified though as well because of the requirements.
Okay.
Um, so um, having this much money, um, so yeah, we do have um important relationships that where we have like our um different checking accounts and things like that. But, you know, we do have a lot of CDs with a lot of different entities, um, because of the need for diversification, cause of the FDIC, there's only two hundred and fifty thousand. So, uh, but yeah, and I, and I will say this, um, uh, we use Huntington for one of our checking accounts, we use uh Chase and Huntington. And um Huntington stepped up on um our bond issuances.
Yes.
And helped us significantly.
Yeah.
And that was due to a banking, uh, banking relationship.
Okay.
So, yeah.
It was Huntington that stepped up?
Yes, Huntington, twice.
Commissioner Dubout.
Just piggybacking on a little bit, I, I know we had a conversation a few years back about whether or not we can do any of our business with local credit unions who are much more up to getting money back out directly into the community. And at that time, it said, most of the dollars we deal with are too large for them to be able to uh handle. But I'm wondering, is that something that we've continued to keep an eye on, like other opportunities for us to do more business with locally based credit unions?
You know, I don't know the answer to that, I don't know if we, if, if we can do that now, if it would be advantageous. I can, I can check into that, I'm sure.
It'd be worth investigating, I think they have a, they have a lot of data.
I think they have, they have a lot of data on how, like the capital that they have in hand is much more likely to be used in the community that, that they're based in.
Here to do a local credit union, I mean, how many Royal Oak residents would get a car loan or a home improvement loan?
Exactly. So the extent that we can do business with our local credit unions, that would definitely be worth exploring.
Okay, back to page seventy-one. Transfers in, this is the second paragraph. They total just over one-point-five million dollars to the general fund. This is an increase of a half a million dollars due to a one-time transfer that the DDA is going to make, and that's to do utility work related to the Rock project. The balance of that is seven-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, and that's the annual transfer from the DDA, and that's to cover the downtown park debt. And then we have for the second year, a two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollar transfer from auto parking for in lieu of tax payment.
This auto parking fund is something we haven't done in the past, this transfer?
This is our second year. This is our second year.
We did the same?
This would be the second year. Our current fiscal year is the first year.
And could you tell me more about what in lieu of tax payment means?
The APS fund is an enterprise fund, and it's actually the enterprise fund we have that is probably the most like a private business. It's actually an activity that could be a private business. And if it were a private business, it would be paying taxes. So we calculated a value on the parking system and calculated a payment in lieu of taxes that we think is a reasonable contribution it should be making to the rest of the city.
I struggle with this a bit. It seems like we should be putting money from, I, my understanding was that the money that we raised in auto parking went back into auto parking, and we had a very long discussion about the raising of rates, where Commissioner Dubb may raise some excellent points about how we should be making sure that as we raise rates, we're continuing to provide a great service to the community. It's not clear to me that we have in fact delivered on some of those things. I have some concerns about how the auto parking, how we, how we're doing on parking generally. And so to be now taking money out of it for a tax payment.
The auto parking system receives services from other city funds, receives services from the police department, receives services from the fire department, receives services from, you know, same kinds of services any other business in Royal Oak would be receiving. So I think it's very reasonable to expect them to be treated in this manner.
Doesn't feel reasonable to me, but...
Commissioner LaVossa?
My question's been answered. I'm fine.
Expenditures, same page, third paragraph. Excluding one-time cash transfers from, for the Rock project, expenditures are budgeted to increase seven percent or two-point-eight million dollars. And this is up mostly due to transfers to public safety. We'll go over that in the next slide. Wages related to costing, wage-related cost increases, medical cost increases, and pension and OPEB cost increases. So the fourth paragraph, transfers out, are totaling just over twenty-four million dollars, same page, seventy-one. The transfer out to public safety is budgeted at twenty-one million dollars. It's two-million-dollar increase from the current year. The forecast estimates that the transfer out to public safety will be as high as twenty-two point seven-five million dollars in the last year of the forecast, twenty-three, twenty-four. Three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars is budgeted to continue to the senior center fund. This will be necessary to support current programming because our revenues are not keeping up. We have done this for many, many years. This was part of the public safety campaign that if the public safety millage was passed, the intent was that the general fund would, on a regular annual basis, supplement the senior center fund at three-hundred-and-fifty thousand. And that's what we've been doing. The transfer, though, is expected, and we'll talk about this at our next meeting, to increase to four-hundred-and-fifty thousand. You'll see in the budget forecast that the expenditures are not keeping up with the revenues, and we're pretty much bringing down the fund balance to a decent level in the senior center fund. So that's expected, that transfer is expected to need to be increased within about five years.
I'm not sure if any of you would recall, we used to fund the senior center largely with community development block grant monies. But the federal government, during an audit, objected to our policy of allowing sixty-year-olds, I think actually fifty-five-year-olds, to be considered senior citizens and partake of activities at the senior center that's funded with community development block grant monies. Our choice was to raise that age limit to, I believe it was sixty-two, or to stop using CDBG money for that purpose. We elected to stop using CDBG money for that purpose, and we've started giving some general fund money to the senior fund.
Three, four years now?
Oh, it's more than that.
Okay, then the transfer to Roots in the amount of twenty thousand dollars, that's for the commission for the arts, and then two thousand for the Memorial Day Parade. Budget also provides for twenty-two thousand dollars, transfer to the Indigent Defense Fund, and that represents the city's match. Two-point-two million dollars is transferred for the Rock project, and that's to make the debt payment. That's over to the debt service fund. And this is in the forecast annually for the whole term of the Rock project. And then the general fund also continues to transfer out four-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollars annually, and that's to pay for the court debt, which will end after
So just a reminder, everyone, we did do a public project that we bonded with the courthouse years ago, and we're paying the debt off in full until twenty twenty-four. It's a very common way of financing civic projects.
We did the same thing a while ago with the library.
Yep.
It's just been a while since we've done any other big projects like that until now.
Question on that, on the court bond, is there any revenue that comes in, whether it's through fines or anything like that, that helps offset that?
Nothing dedicated, but the court does bring in significant amount of revenues, probably four and a half million. Just in fines.
Yeah, but that's used to pay for court personnel.
That goes into the general fund.
I just want to make sure I understand whether there's an offsetting revenue that...
Dedicated? No.
Not dedicate, but whether it comes out in the wash or if this is actual money, a net loss to the general fund of this, of this sum?
Technically, if you say, okay, if you look at the fines that the court brings in as revenue, and if you take the court's budget and add this, technically the revenues they bring in are higher, if you look at it that way.
And that this is revenue that's going into the general fund?
The revenue that the court generates goes into the...
As are all the court expenditures.
Right.
Now, the one question, can you see Cory looking back there? There's always an argument between the police department and the court as to who actually is generating the fine revenue.
He generates it. They collect it.
Yeah, I'm simply trying to get a grasp. I mean, it's, it's one thing if funds are coming in through the normal processes of the court, and it's going to pay for personnel, it's going to pay for keeping the lights on, it's going to pay indirectly for this bond debt. I'm just trying to make sure, I fully understand whether that's what's going on here and whether this is essentially being paid for through the court fines that are collected, or if this is being paid for by the taxpayers in that fashion.
The revenue that the court generates goes into the general fund bucket. The payment for the debt service comes out of the general fund bucket. Is there a direct relationship?
And the expenditures come out of the general fund, court expenditures.
Correct.
So that's hard to...
Okay. So when you add up the revenues that come in and you subtract out the expenditures, including this debt service, the revenues are sufficient to cover?
Yes, Sam.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll do it at that. Okay, then the final paragraph on page seventy-one. Fund balance combined, general fund and public safety fund balance is budgeted to use two-point-two million dollars for this year. Any fund balance level is projected at fourteen-point-four million or twenty-seven percent, which is outside the fund balance policy of ten to twenty-five percent. Then I just mentioned, however, the projected forecast shows a continued structural deficit with use of fund balance between two-point-one million and three-point-five million annually. It grows as we go, go out into the forecast. A combined fund balance for the general fund and public safety funds total two-point-three million or just over four percent of expenditures at the end of the forecast. And then just mentioned, should the forecast be accurate? Is it accurate? No. No forecast is accurate, you know? I mean, no one knows what the price of oil is going to be next Friday, okay? I can't project out, you know, six years. You know, it's not exact. But what I do is I extrapolate out the recommended budget, meaning if next year is what's going to happen the next six years, extrapolate it out, this is what it's going to look like. So that's how that forecast, for the most part, is performed. It's not, technically calling it a forecast is inaccurate, but there's really no, it's estimated actuals is probably the proper thing to say. Because we don't pretend to say, oh, three years from now, this is going to happen. We don't do that. We're not economists. But basically, the forecast, again, I'm going to repeat it, it's the recommended budget, extrapolate it out. So if you don't make changes, if there's not changes to revenues and expenditures, this is what it's going to look like.
Commissioner Macy?
So does that include things in the, and if you're extrapolating this budget out five years, does that include things that are clearly a one-time expenditure in this year's budget?
Those are pulled out.
Those are pulled out, okay. So this budget goes out for five years, but we know that five years, the next year after that, we're going to finish paying at least one of our debt payments. Is that right?
We're going to have the debt falling off, and we're going to have, oh, sorry, I was going to say the, the fire, but that's an individual levy, that's not in the general fund. But we have the court falling off after twenty twenty-four.
The court, which comes out of the general fund?
Which is, yeah, which is, you know, four-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand.
Half a million, yeah. And what's the other one that falls off?
Um, the fire village? The fire debt is going to be falling off actually in a couple of years, but that's just a small, if you go back to the millage table, it's a very small amount of millage we collect for that, but still it's nice. It's not going to help the general fund, but at least it's going to lower the millage.
So it looked like in the debt payment chart that would, and then in the little company numbers, that we're going to drop fi- five million less, we're going to have to pay for...
That's the water and sewer fund. That, that debt chart is all funds. So when you see that big drop, that's in the one.
So we don't have to pay water and sewer funds in five years?
No, it's just a, it's a, it's a bond issuance that we're done paying. We have a lot of coon drain debts, and it's probably a couple of the coon drain debts falling off.
Oh, okay.
So that'll help the, the millage rate.
And it's highly likely that the Water Resources Commission will issue more debt, which we're obligated to pay, even though we have absolutely no say in the matter of whether they issue it or not.
Because they've done it multiple times.
They keep doing it. They just keep doing it. So in terms of the general fund, maybe you don't know this decrease in the debt payment starting that year, it sounds like it's at least half a million, maybe a little bit more?
Yes.
Okay.
Almost half a million.
And that's, so it's just really the court that is impacting the general fund?
Correct.
The payments that we make on our debt, if I make my student loan payments in advance, I have less to pay going forward. Does the same thing apply here? If I, if we were to make, if we were to make maybe a one-time payment to pay down a little bit of one of these debts, maybe the one with, that we're getting the worst deal on, does it have an impact going forward on the budget?
I have a couple of private placements I've made in the last couple of years with banks that we had banking relationships with. But the normal official bonds we issued, when they're callable, we can refund them when they're callable. And there's windows of opportunity in each of the issuances, and I'd have to go and look. But that's when you can refi those.
So you'd have, it would have to be a refinance in order to make the...
I think what Commissioner Macy's asking, if we were to pay more towards the debt, do we save on interest in the long run? Like if you paid your mortgage, you know, put an extra hundred dollars on your mortgage or did a lump sum of twenty thousand or something like that?
Most of our debt is structured through bonds, and you would have to call specific bonds. It's, it's not like you can just pick any number you want and prepay it, and that comes off the principal and...
Yeah, we only have a few that aren't structured that way. And I'd have to look at, the recent ones, like the sidewalk one, and that's basically the residents, you know, paying for that as the money comes in. You know, we float that, and then I'd have to, I'd have to look to see if any other were private placements where they're not structured like a bond.
So...
But I don't, I don't think so.
Before I too broadly expose my ignorance of this, we're earning on, for it sounds like, the interest rate on our, on our cash fund balance is about three percent or getting close to three percent. What are we, what are we paying on these other, on these others, on this debt that we have?
Actually, if you go to the debt section on page, it starts at two fifty-four, it shows the rate on each one. So there's, there's quite a range because of when they were issued, but it gives you the rates on, it should give you the rates on all of them. So like the...
Yeah, one's two and a half, one's one-point-six-five, one's four-point-two-five. That's...
The...
Two-point-five percent, five-point-two-five, two-point-five percent, two-point-five.
Court's four-point-three-seven-five. You know, because that one we know is coming out of the general fund.
Yeah, but two are these, the way they're amortized, the more mature they are, maybe it's, with private placement, I imagine you have an amortization table where you're paying mostly principal versus interest with the bonds. Is that the same?
Yeah, the private placement, there's an opportunity there, but I, like I said, it's the sidewalks, so that's not really...
Yeah.
And they're, yeah.
Because with bonds, are we, when we pay this, I mean, I know there's call windows and everything, but earlier on, it may, it may make sense. Later on, with some of these older ones, it may not make sense because you're paying mostly principal. So what are you going to do? You know, you're paying next to nothing based on the table.
You can possibly finish it off, but, yeah.
So earlier today, we talked about our policy, our fund balance policy, which is, you know, at least ten, no more than twenty-five percent, and yet here we are acknowledging that we are outside that at a, a top of twenty-seven percent. Shouldn't we be reducing our fund balance down to twenty-five percent to be consistent with our policy?
Yes, Commissioner Douglas.
I think so too. I thought you might.
Well, I guess it depends on what you see in the next five years.
So that's the argument, the, the adjusted policy, is that...
Well, then we adjust, then we change the policy to be different. I mean, a policy is a policy.
Well, I think the policy, the way that it was understood by staff when they construed the budgets, was that it's not year-to-year twenty-five percent max, it's over the budget horizon of five years, you know, to consider these factors. Kind of not as a moving bogey, but, I mean, look at, when we got the fifty-five million dollars of other revenue in, in that one year, we were way over, okay, get rid of it all. And then the next year, you're like, oh, crap, how do I pay off my retirement bonds? You know what I mean? Like, oh, man, I, it was for something. Like, oh man, I, it was for something.
So then why have a policy?
Thank you.
That's another question, yeah. I think that.
Maybe you set a floor, but no ceiling.
So, I mean, we had this debate last year, I feel like we are the policy. You know, we're elected to decide where the funds go and to have, I mean, I think every year we have to give instruction to staff to say, hey, we feel comfortable, you know, we want something in savings, we want you to be, you know, we don't want to, you know, blow the entire fund tomorrow, but I think it's a discussion worth having down the road. Commissioner Dubb.
Yeah, I think the change that we discussed earlier, which says staff should take into consideration the multiple-year outlook and then say fund balance out that far should be within that policy. We're still obeying the policy, but taking a snapshot of one year and saying this year's over, so we've got to burn it down, even though, you know, two years from now, now we're going to be down to, that doesn't make any sense. Like giving them, you know, guardrails, which we oversee in the context of the budget over multiple years makes sense to me, as opposed to having a hard and fast rule for one year. So I think that's reasonable, it gives staff parameters to work within, it gives us a frame of reference for what we want to see in the budget, but just chopping it down one year, knowing that fund balance is going to take a ten million dollar hit in the next year, or there's some huge risk hanging out there that we need to absorb, I don't think that residents want us to take massive risks to adhere mindlessly to a number. Like, we want to absorb risk and make sure that we're providing an outlook for steady quality services year after year after year after year.
Commissioner Douglas.
Totally get that. Why not remove the cap? I mean, if it's going to be twenty-seven percent this year and we've got a policy that says twenty-five percent, I absolutely think that we should, you know, consider all of these factors and, and maybe save more in some years. I totally get that, but why have a policy on paper that says twenty-five percent? Why not just remove the cap?
Well, I think that's a fair discussion. I'm going to let Commissioner Lavassar interject.
Thank you. I believe the cap is there as a protection for taxpayers to make sure that the city is not overtaxing the residents for the services that the city is providing. And it's meant to be a reasonable limit, a reasonable rainy day fund, so to speak. And anything in excess of that would be considered unreasonable and would be an indicator that the residents are being overtaxed. I do want to follow up on something that Commissioner Macy was indicating. She was looking for what debts that we might be able to pay off early and perhaps have a savings in interest. And with that in mind, I would point to the deficits we have in our retirement accounts.
That'd be a better use.
Which I think, and you know, based upon our assumptions, if we took a million dollars that's currently sitting in, is a fund balance, and if we're to invest that at two point eight percent, which is roughly what we're getting these days, I believe, you know, that's generating twenty-eight thousand dollars per year. But if we're investing it at, in our funds and we're making assumption of seven point two five, you know, that's seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars per year worth of revenue coming in. So as far as eliminating a debt that makes us financially stronger for the future, that's probably the way to go from my perspective. You know, the sooner we can tackle the retirement accounts, make sure that those are properly funded, the stronger we're going to be in the future financially to withstand any downfalls in the economy.
Commissioner Dubb.
Yeah, we discussed this last year and I agree, and I know Commissioner Lavassar and I agreed that putting more capital into those funds makes sense, and I would argue that by adjusting our assumptions, we've done that, we're putting an additional two-plus million toward those funds. So that has happened. And as Mr. Johnson said, the seven point seven five is a reasonable expectation and we fully expect to surpass that over a twenty-year horizon. So from a, you know, financial, the state politically was putting this pressure on cities, whether or not it made good financial sense, because they needed to, you know, I guess beat us up more on top of, stealing all of our revenue sharing over twenty years. So we adjusted the rate, which is, we're putting two-plus million more in, which means we will get there faster, you know, based on our assumptions. So I think that's done. Now, going above and beyond that, now if you pay it off faster than you need it, that means that we're investing that capital in something that could be used for essential services, for capital improvement, other things that our residents want. So I don't think we want to get too far ahead, because I think with the additional capital that we are investing in those, according to this budget, we're, I think we're pretty well on target and our actuaries feel that way too.
Commissioner Macy.
So I would agree with that. If it seems viable to get this commission to spend more money on capital and infrastructure over the next year to spend down this twenty-seven percent, I was completely unsuccessful with that last year, despite many months of effort. And I, it's hard to deny that it makes, to me, it just makes financial sense and maybe I exposed my ignorance of the finances, because that's what I was getting at, is that if we're, if we're only earning three percent on it here and then we could be spending at this, we could be getting at this better rate for a debt that will save us in the long term and perhaps reduce the possibility of us going down to, in the general fund to four percent of expenditures five years out, isn't that a wise financial decision to make, given that we don't seem willing to spend that money now? And we have a policy of twenty-five percent. The arguments that I'm hearing about why we have this cap of twenty-five percent and the guardrails and so on, and you know, what if, what if an expense comes up? What if this happens, what if that happens? That could be at infinitive, when do, when does it end? That's why there is a cap, that's why there's a ceiling, that's why there's a number, so that the community knows that we are taxing them responsibly and spending their money responsibly. That's why we have these guidelines. And if we're not going to use it and we're just going to use our discretion at this table, I agree that we should get rid of the policy. However, when we do that, I'm going to argue about it, because I think that the ceiling serves a good purpose.
Well, yeah, I mean, but here's the thing, the fundamental flaw in all the discussion is.
No matter what you do.
Yeah, but the fundamental flaw in all this discussion is it's assumed that this twenty-five percent is a good number. I mean, one could argue that fifty percent is a good number. I mean, most financial advisors, if we were to parlay into our own personal, you know, they say you should have six months of your salary in savings in case you get laid off or something happens, you have an unexpected car expense or whatever it may be. So the ten percent is a stopgap to make sure that, you know, cities aren't living paycheck to paycheck. The twenty-five percent, I know that some people came up with this number or whatever, but I mean, if you go to last year and you listen to what Mr. Johnson had to say regarding the twenty-five percent, there wasn't a lot of focus put on it as, you know, the discussion that we're having today. I don't think that, I mean, I think looking at a year-to-year, hey, we have two percent to spend, I mean, I don't know that twenty-five percent is the right number to have. What I do know is that we are at an unprecedented level in our, in our country's growth and all of those cycles end. We're still in a position in this state, unfortunately, where we have the Headley Amendment to Prop A. We're in a position where we have a president tweeting that's making my retirement portfolio go down significantly within eight minutes, and I know that companies in the auto industry are already laying people off because of the impact of tariffs. So when I look at the future, I'm not bullish. I'm a little bit more tempered and conservative, so I don't know if twenty-five percent is even the right number now or if it shouldn't be a little higher. So when I look at these forecasts, none of these, all these forecasts here that Ms. Rudd put together are like, okay, the cable franchise fee, okay, you know, that's, that's, that's might go away. She's not looking at potentially a downturn in the economy and seeing our revenues thrift by five to ten percent. And that is, you know, we, I mean, I don't know that we'll be in, I'm not forecasting that we'll be in a position that we were back in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, during the most darkest draconian years of the filistical calamity, but, you know, we are going to see a downtrend. I mean, we'd be foolish not to think that, you know, there's going to be a bump on this camel. So, you know, I think twenty-five percent, maybe, you know, in the first three years of a robust economy, okay, but what about when you've already exceeded, you know, a ten-year run? Is twenty-five percent the right number? So we've got Commissioner Dubb, Commissioner Lavassar, and then Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, essentially, everything else in our budget is based on projections. You know, looking at the past to see past trends and looking forward, albeit conservative, because that's also in the best interest of our residents, is to not be overly optimistic and dug ourselves into a hole. So I don't know why this one rule would be the one thing that's not based on projections and we just look at what's happening just this year and then make decisions that could then, you know, put us in a really tight spot next year. I think the policy change makes sense, where twenty-five percent is the target, but that we look over a five-year budget, just like we do when we're making our budget, as we look at anticipated revenues, anticipated expenditures. Like Mr. Johnson said, there's several projects on the horizon we know are coming that aren't reflected in this year's budget, but impact this year's budget and our considerations around this year's budget. So it would not make sense for this one rule to be the one thing that we look at in a vacuum when everything else in the budget is based on projections and assumptions.
I take it's my turn?
Yes, if I remember the order.
Thank you very much. I do believe our situation's a bit different from a household situation. And the mayor pointed out that financial advisors will recommend that people have a certain rainy day fund in case of some bad situation. Usually that would be a situation where you lose a job, basically you lose close to a hundred percent of your income if you lose a job. Our situation's different because we're not likely to lose a hundred percent of our income. We may get, lose something because of a drop in the economy. And that's really what we need to base any rainy day fund, is what could we reasonably anticipate losing? Our recent history, as far as coming up with numbers like this, is probably looking back to two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, that range of time, and see what was the drop at that time and use that as a guide as to what is an appropriate rainy day fund. Whether it's twenty-five percent, I don't know, but that's what the policy is. If that number were to change, I would probably want to see some, some data from what the change in our budget was based on the happening of the Great Recession.
Before Commissioner Douglas, I'll just say that I fundamentally disagree in when we look at, you know, a household. Yeah, if you lose your job, you lose your money, you can sell your house, you can get rid of your car and move into your parents' basement. If the city finds itself in a same calamity of having to cut things, it means we cut firefighters, it means we cut police officers, it means people don't get the service that they need in the desperate time when they most need it. And so I would argue that our responsibility far exceeds that of an individual household and we have to be extra cautious and careful, because the things that we do, the decisions that we make, the funding cuts that we'd have to come directly out of personnel, personnel that are responsible for literally life and death situations. So for me, I look at it a little differently, but I respect your opinion, Commissioner Lavassar. Commissioner Douglas.
So somebody said earlier here, it may have been the mayor or Commissioner Dubb, we are the policy. We're looking at a budget that we are going to approve that has a fund balance top end at twenty, twenty-seven percent. I'm fine with that. I mean, I acknowledge everything you've said. Yes, we need to be flexible about that, but why have a policy that says twenty-five percent when you could have a policy that says no less than ten percent or an amount to be determined in the annual budget approval process every year?
Commissioner Dubb.
Commissioner Purush is waiting to get it, but my response to that question is to force the conversation, to force the dialogue, to force the debates, that we know why we did what we did, even if it's at twenty-seven this year, because we just plan to be at twenty-three next year. It forces the public discussion and I think that is the value in the policy, sorry.
Commissioner Purush.
Total taxable value in the city fell fourteen percent between two thousand and oh-six and oh-seven and budget year two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven. Total taxable value fell fourteen percent in that three-year period. Now, I haven't calculated out how that impact on revenue, but that was an extraordinarily dramatic drop. Now, there's no guarantee, there's no forecast, that the next recession, which will come, will be that draconian. But on the other hand, that's what we had to live through and it came just like that, and that's how those values dropped. So when I'm looking at this discussion, I'm thinking about that in the back of my head, that it can happen practically overnight and all of a sudden, you're going from three hundred and three employees in your system down to two hundred and sixty-nine. And you've laid off not only police and fire, but you've laid off most of the people in your parks maintenance department and a whole ton of people in City Hall. So when I look at this discussion and the projections that Ms. Rudd has put together and has forecasted out, this is how close we are going to be close to the edge in two thousand and twenty-four. That's what I'm looking at, it's this history and how quickly it can turn bad overnight.
Just to add to your point, Commissioner Purush, how slowly it rebounds.
Yes, we're not back up to that level yet. We still have not reached the employment levels we had in twenty, in our peak. Ms. Rudd just mentioned that. We're still building back up if we want to get to that point. We still have a quarter of the park maintenance people that we had ten years ago.
Because if you think about it, maybe it goes down five percent, ten percent. Well, then it claws up a point a year, because the Headley, well, at least if you have twenty-five percent of your operating budget, that gives you five years at least to backfill that gap until you, things turn around or until you have a different plan or, you know, whatever it may be. Your point is, in my opinion, dead nut sound. Commissioner Dubb.
Just one more point on this is, I was looking at a presentation from Michigan Municipal League. It's from a couple of years ago, I don't know if the statutes changed. They're saying the state's indicator for municipal fiscal distress is if your fund balance hits thirteen percent. So from my perspective, I never want to be near a whiff of thirteen percent, right? So I don't want to be on the state's radar as being in any kind of distress, which means we need to maintain a healthy fund balance that anticipates projected costs in coming years and drops in coming years. Which fluctuates. Ms. Rudd.
Last year when we discussed this, I believe I put a letter together about things to consider for fund balance policy. And I just want to mention this because it hasn't been mentioned. The way that City of Royal Oak is structured, the general fund has a very small, limited allowable levy with all these renewed levies for library that would have to be renewed continuously. The new public safety fund, solid waste of the local levy. So also, when you're considering fund balance, you need to take into consideration, what if the library isn't renewed? You know, this is an opportunity, you know, would, would the general fund be used to keep that alive for a year before there could be another, you know, vote or something like that? Public safety, what if it's not renewed? Can we react quick enough? And those are the things that you have to take into consideration, because you can't just look at other municipalities where they might have started with eighteen mills. Royal Oak did not, they're not structured that way. They're not the only city structured this way, but I'm sure there's others, but we have a lot of dedicated millages that are up for renewal quite frequently. And, you know, should those important renewals not pass, you know, is the intent, do we use the general fund for at least to wind those services down or until there could be another proposal perhaps that goes out to the residents? So I think that's an important thing to talk about when you talk about Royal Oak's fund, fund balance for the general fund.
Commissioner Macy.
So that's true, but again, we're not economists and we're not predicting what's going to happen. And if there's a non-renewal of one of these millages by our citizenry, that's telling, that's them telling us something. We don't want a library anymore in Royal Oak, we don't, we don't value public safety. I don't believe those things would happen, but if they did, I think we, our response shouldn't be like, well, we're going to fund it at the same level that we were funding it regardless, because that's, that's what we think they want, that's not showing what they want. So I think, and it's, everything we're talking about at this table, everyone lists all the terrible things that could go wrong and what if this happens and what if that happens? For the last decade, we've been predicting these bad things and have not been spending this money. And now we're saying twenty-five percent, we, that's a made-up number, and yet twenty-seven percent is the perfect right number? I mean, why do we have a policy that has a number in it and then say that that number's ridiculous? But we know that one that's two points higher is perfect. We're making, we're throwing numbers around with really, without, without any regard to what they actually mean and we have, we have a budget policy here that says this. And again, I'd also like to say, part of what I'm talking about is, well, I would like to, if Commissioner Purush wants to make that a motion to add a parks employee, I would second it in a heartbeat. But if we're not going to be spending this money on anything new that's going to be continuing in the budget, is there, is there a financial reason, this is what I was trying to get at at the beginning, that we don't use this money for our OPEB? Doesn't that save us in our general fund overall, over time? And also get us under the twenty-seven percent without costing us? That's what I'm trying to get at and I don't, I still don't understand the answer.
Ms. Rudd.
I believe I mentioned this last year, at this time, I would not contribute to pension and OPEB, because you don't buy high and that's what we'd be doing. We'd be buying high, we'd be putting money in when we're three years overdue for a correction. And if you're, if you're planning on doing that, just please don't do it now.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Okay. Yeah.
And I think too, I mean, you made the point, we're not economists, that's right, you know what I mean? We're not, we're policymakers and we're stewards of making sure this community remains safe and the most vibrant place it can live. And yeah, that does include spending money.
So, so we do have to, you know, look at what our fund balance is and make cognitive decisions. But we also have, fortunately, a award-winning finance director and a city manager that spent, you know, a better part of four decades, is that fair to say? In municipal finance and city management that have admitted that they have a budget moving forward this year that is conservative, that doesn't consider economics. We just consider slight trends in revenue, okay? But we also consider known risks, you know, footnotes, if you would, in a 10K or 10Q that say, okay, this franchise fee, or, you know, this is at risk, or we're going to cut back this millage rate because we're overfunded in the solid, you know, waste fund. So we do have something, and I don't look at the 25% to be honest. I look at the five-year projections, where do we stand? And we need enough money today to make sure that we can at least reasonably say to our constituents, we have a plan for the next two, three. We can't predict, but at least, you know, based on the information that we have. I mean, we can't say we're not all, you know, award-winning economists, but based on what we have, the talent that we have, the exceptional talent that we have, where we're at. And, you know, you know, I don't know what my salary's going to be next year, but I still do a family budget. I, I don't know, you know, if my basement's going to blow up again and I'll have sewer line issues or whatever, but I, I have a budget. We do the best we can to predict. And I don't look at the percentage. I look at, you know, how that fund changes the balance from year to year, what expenditures are in there, and is it reasonable? And yeah, I mean, for me, I prefer to be a little bit more conservative.
So based on that assessment, we should be cutting this budget significantly because five years out, we're at 4.1%, and that's below our floor, our 10% floor. So if we're really considering what we're going to be at at five years out, and that's what our concern is, then this budget is crazy and we should be cutting significantly.
Commissioner Dubac.
As Ms. Rudd said, her projections assume we do the exact same thing every consecutive year that we're doing this year. So to your point, those corrections can be made next budget or the budget after, so we don't get to that floor. That, that's the point, is what she bases those future bud, those future projections on is what we did this year. And we can make adjustments in the years going forward. Now, with regard to, you know, the 25 or 27, if there are expenses, you know, investments that we can make, whether it's OPEB, which, you know, I agree, I don't think it's the right time, plus we're already doing an additional $2 million toward that because of the adjustment. But if there's specific one-time, you know, capital improvement expenses or investments we can make that bring value to resins that we don't think puts the budget at risk, let's talk about that. Let's not talk about like, let's spend until we have this much left. If there's something, someone wants to put on the table, put on the table, but it can't be ongoing expenses because the fund balance is not a revenue stream. Fund balance is one-time cash. Then once you spend it, it's gone. Maybe it gets replenished, maybe it doesn't. That's what we don't know. So if someone, if you, if you want a new swing set somewhere for 10 grand, you say that. Don't just say, hey, I want to spend this to get to the 25%. But now is the time. Now is the time to bring those things forward so Mr. Johnson and Ms. Rudd can work it into the budget. I don't want to start with an arbitrary number and say, let's burn that down because I think it's everyone's worst expectation of government. I would say as far as our 10-
You gave them the money, let's spend it.
Our 10 years of prosperity is great, but in the life of a city, that means nothing. The people that came 15 years before that weren't talking about all the terrible things that could happen and then did happen. So we have an obligation to be very, I think, cynical and concerned and conservative, which is certainly not my nature to be hyper-conservative. But when it comes to the dollars, based on the history of the city, based on how close the city came to receivership, like not just in the wake of the crash and the run-up to the crash, and then the crash almost destroyed us. What we've built up is good, and being where we are right now is good. And the fight we're having right now is a privileged conversation just for us to be talking about, do we have too much in our rainy day balance, right? So if there's specific expenditures that people think are overdue, that are one-time costs, that don't add to ongoing budget line items, let's have that conversation. But not just let's burn down a number to get to an arbitrary number.
Well, it looks like happens when we burned down the retirement account, you know, 10, 15 years ago because we had an overage. Whoops, look where we're at now. Commissioner Purush.
And there was a period of years when we weren't contributing anything to the retirement account, a period of like six or seven years. That was a disaster. What I was going to find out is that Commissioner Dubac mentioned the Michigan Municipal League financial information that said that when your fund balance gets down to 13%, they consider you potentially in distress, a community in distress. For years and years, the policy, at least that I was familiar with, was that the targeted percentage for a fund balance was 20%. It wasn't a range. And I think what's driving us crazy is this range thing. I think perhaps if we just were to set a target that seems reasonable, 20%, which is what was the target forever, to me perhaps is a better way to approach this. And there are going to be years when you're going to be a little bit more, a little bit less, depending upon how revenues come in, you know, little variable factors. But I, what I'm struggling with is this range thing. And for me, I would be much more comfortable if we were just to set a target, a targeted percentage, 20%, because that's what I'm used to dealing with forever. And maybe that's a suggested way to handle this. I don't know.
Commissioner Mason.
So I'm so glad Commissioner Dubac invited me to give some things that I'd like to spend money on. So I've already said two tonight in the golf course and the senior center parking lot. But I have a long list for the perks. I would love to get all of our place structures replaced underneath with the thingy.
Commissioner Mason, can I ask when we get to the park fund, we bring those up?
Well, the question right now is, is that even worth bringing up? Because I tried-
Yeah, it absolutely is. And I think you can find, I mean, here's the thing. This is not a, you know-
Can I just finish my sentence?
You can finish.
So just, is it worth bringing up given that people seem very tied to this number? So Commissioner Dubac is the first opening that I've had for anyone to say, oh, we could possibly spend some of this money. Everyone else has been like, God forbid, we spend any more money because then we're all going to fall into a hole. So if it's worth bringing this up, I will happily do that again, but it does not seem like this conversation is leading me to have any hope.
If your argument is that let's spend money on these things because we should, we have money if we get down to the 20%, that's not a fundamental sales approach I would go for. If you say, we desperately need this, and this is the utility that our constituents will get out of this, this is how I think it would improve the equality of life for, you know, whatever, and this is necessary, I think that's the argument you want to have, and that's the pitch you want to make. And, you know, if you say, I need, you know, $18.4 million to do this, you're not going to get support. But if it's within this range and we feel comfortable and the utility that we get from those expenditures as a community, I mean, there's always low-hanging fruit. You know, I, you, you do a family, but you go to the grocery store, you know, I'm going to spend $100, and then, oh my gosh, bacon's on sale for a dollar a package. Well, you might spend 110. It's an opportunity. You take it. And you break the budget, but you're going to, you know, get some utility if you like bacon. I don't know. People seem to like bacon. I just use that as an example, but, but yeah, I mean, we do that all the time. We have the staff budget, and I think last year we put 20 grand into the arts. We put, you know, we did some things for the animal shelter, whatever it may be. But I think when we get to that fund, you got to, I mean, you're the Parks and Rec rep here. We trust your opinion. And, but I think maybe where we get off on the wrong foot is starting that conversation by saying, well, I got X amount of money because we should arbitrarily be at 25%. Instead, maybe let's have that conversation to say, look, there are some things I think that can bring an improved quality of life. It's not going to materially change from, you know, 27, 25% range. I think it's worth it. I think that's where that discussion should have, and the door's always open for that.
Great.
Commissioner Dubac.
Yeah, I would just add that the conversation I think we are having is whether or not staff should bring us a budget that is above that 25%, and I think they should bring us what they think is the most fiscally responsible thing to do based on their experience and expertise. I'm totally open to having a conversation if there's another, you know, $10,000, $100,000 if we see that flexibility in the fund balance to spend on things that we think are essential based on our experience with the, with residents and in our own neighborhoods. That, well, like the mayor said, let's do that when we get to that line item.
But keep in mind too, the very important point, and I think we expressed this last year, is that you're always going to find it a challenge to spend money for, out of, if you have a fund balance and not a revenue source, you know, funding things on an ongoing basis and using fund balance as a, as a way to do that is never a wise strategy because, I mean, if you hire somebody for 100 grand a year, oh, we'll fund it out of here. Well, you know, now and 10 years, you got this sticky obligation. But if you say, look, I'm willing to take a hit to the general fund and, you know, we're going to, you know, this is going to improve services here, it shouldn't be, you know, I'm going to fund this. It's not like I'm going to sign up for a new cable subscription, you know what I mean? So I think for some of us here, maybe we're a little bit too financially, and when it comes to financial statements trained in that area of, you know, debits and credits, and that might be an obstacle to overcome, but. Okay, so back on track. Commissioner Mason made some fine points. And I look forward to that discussion in Parks and Rec.
Okay, our first cost center, real quickly, page 75, is the mayor and city commission cost center. Meetings and conferences increasing $1,500 due to some additional sessions that are going to be attended by city commissioners. And then also dues and memberships increasing $1,600 to join the urban sustainability directors network. District Court, page 79, part-time wages are increasing about $45,000 relative to the original 18, 19 budget due to the probability of adding a part-time magistrate to cover the increased civil caseload. That's in part due to the increased demands because of the MADC and to adjust also the salaries of some of the part-time employees in order to remain competitive with the other courts in the region. Contracted services increasing $17,000. And that is due to an increase in garnishment filings. And then contracted worker services, our budget increased $70,000 to cover the sober link alcohol testing, which is expected to be reimbursed by the drug court grant. City managers, page 85. Here there are some newer personnel in the city manager's office, so that's why those wages are increasing a little more than the other reasons we talked about earlier this evening. And then the budget's also increasing $6,000 for grant tracking software. This was covered by SMCOG in the past years, and they're not anticipating that to be covered by SMCOG next year. Elections on page 88. Part-time wages and overtime are increasing due to election workers receiving wage increases in addition to some additional hours worked possibly. There'll be two elections in next fiscal year. And then there's a request for $90,000 to purchase a high-speed image scanner to process absentee ballots, and this would be their second scanner.
Ms. Mason.
At the risk of making Melanie mad at me, I'm curious why, so we've only had that-
Make Melanie mad at you.
I know, I don't want to. I really don't. We got the one last year, the 90,001. This year's an off-year election, and we now have the new absentee ballot rules, which I understand will increase the volume of absentee ballots, but also seems like it will spread it out in time. Like you'll get so many more of, so much, a greater percentage of the overall vote total earlier, or at least before election day.
You miss the ballots, but you can't start counting them. Right.
Oh, I see. So it's still for election day.
We've more than doubled our-
You're not allowed to open it until election day.
All right, forget that argument then. But back to my first argument, that this is a smaller election year, and we just got this first one for the last time last year. So, and I will say, just so she, maybe you just slightly listen at me. Part of the reason I'm asking about this is because we have two requests for personnel in this that we were not, were not elevated to the city manager's budget. And I just wondered, even though I just got my lecture about how we can't add ongoing expenses, if those two positions which seem by the descriptions in there to be quite necessary, if this could maybe offset those, and I was wanting to hear more about the need for this machine.
So, Ms. Hales.
Well, I did the mailing for the permanent absentee list. So we had just over 4,000 on that list. We're now over 9,400. So a lot of the other communities around here that have the high-speed scanner, Rochester Hills has four, Southfield has four, Farmington Hills has three. Try, as I said, it's just kind of the unknown. We know we're going to have a lot more absentees to process. We can only process them in one day. It's not just you're scanning them through a scanner. It's, it goes through this whole program where after each batch, you, the workers have to go through and make sure that all these boxes are clear. If there's any, anything that's red, they have to adjudicate a ballot, so they actually have to click on it, look at it. So it's not like they're just scanning, scanning, scanning. Why do we need another scanner? It's because they're adjudicating, it stops the process. If I have another scanner, it keeps it moving and keeps it going. It's more, I definitely would want this for the presidential 2020, for sure.
Well, I think you'd want to work out the quirks this year too. I mean, if you're going to spend in one year the next, you might as well get used to that process this year.
Right.
So you don't have a nightmare-
Catastrophe.
Yeah, in a presidential election. Commissioner Douglas.
Is there, might there come a time when we could, if it is legally allowed, reduce our number of precincts?
They are, that's one of the bills that they keep, the Michigan clerks keep working on, trying to get, you know, especially now with the permanent AV list and the new law, that, okay, maybe we can compare, we have X amount of people that are on this list. Can we expand a precinct up to 5,000 registered voters as opposed to, you know, 2,999? We are hoping to get somewhere with this, but it's, look at how long it's taken to Michigan to be able to get to anyone can vote absentee.
Right.
That's been an issue since I started here, so that's been a long time.
Let us know when you need a resolution.
Okay.
Commissioner Mason.
Before we had the fast one last year, there was something else that was being used. So what's the total outlook of the machines that we own to add to process absentee ballots?
Well, we used to just use the machines that were at the precincts. But with this, all the new equipment we had, we could either go with a high-speed option or go with the regular tabulators that you see in the precincts. It's a lot faster to use the high-speed scanner as opposed to the precinct machines.
Okay, and I think the last question. Is there some kind of a standard that you're aware of? Or, you know, if you have 5,000 absentee votes coming in for a day, you need one, and 10,000 you need two. Is there something like that that you know of?
No, I just, I've been comparing with other cities that are around our size and seeing what they have and what they've purchased and what's working well for them, so.
Okay, so just for the general commission, I just think it's worth putting a pin in this and considering it as against some of these other things that have come up. I feel like both the finance position and the assessor position seem to be desperately needed. And I'm not sure if this is desperately needed this year as opposed to next year. And I understand about the ongoing costs, you don't have to tell me again, but I'm just-
But no, but I mean, at the same time though, what you're doing is if you, if you don't get it, it's a one-time expenditure that hopefully, you know, it costs us nothing the next year, maybe some maintenance. But you would also theoretically have an increase in effort in the clerk's office, you know, as well. So you wouldn't be, you know, you might be able to say, hey, I'm not going to do this. I'm going to put two positions over here, and now you've created another headache and maybe extra work and effort and labor. Maybe it's not in positions, but overtime or whatever. And so, you know, there's never a easy swap all the time.
Totally agree, and I'm not necessarily saying we should definitely not do that and definitely do this. I'm just saying I want the commission to be thinking about that as we look at these other things.
Since it sort of came up again, we keep going back and forth between operating costs, ongoing expenditures, and capital costs, and-
I literally just got this lecture.
I think I can provide something that might be helpful is what I typically use in trying to evaluate how you equate the two. Is at current interest rates, I would equate it at about a 33 to 1, meaning a dollar in operating costs should be considered about the equivalent of $33 in a capital expenditure.
Okay, that helps, that's helpful.
That's based on 3%.
I think I 80% understand that, but that's helpful.
She has ADI of 20, so we're 100%.
Change it to 90, 10?
Okay, Ms. Rudd.
Page 93, the finance department. Here there's a significant in- Here there's a significant increase because there is numerous new staff, and there is the potential for them to have merit increases. So that is one reason for the personnel increase. And then the only other change is contracted worker services. We have a contract, contractual increase for five hundred dollars, and that's for our municipal bond advisors for their contract. And I also need to mention, these orange boxes do not necessarily have everything. More of the, the tiny notes about, you know, office supplies went up five hundred dollars or whatever. I have not included them on the slides, but they're many times additional information in the book.
These are, so don't try to reconcile it versus the numbers in the table, it's just, these are the highlights.
The slider, the more highlights, yeah.
Ms. Macy?
Is now the time when I would ask Ms. Red about the position that was requested but not filled? I mean, there's some information here, but. Is there more information?
I mean, this is the general information, but, I mean, if you wanna talk to me or ask me any questions or about it, or do you just?
So I feel like there's been a couple of years, in fact, that you've been, you've been trying to add a position. Yes or no?
I've needed one, I haven't officially requested one in the, in the budget, but.
Might be the assessor that you're thinking of.
Oh, maybe it is. So what pushed you over the edge this year to think I need to request one in the budget?
I think it was the, originally what was in the budget was to look at wages. The HR department had to look at wages. That really hasn't happened, because we have, in my department, I can speak, we have a problem attracting experienced individuals. I have not been able to hire someone experienced, okay? It's a training ground. That is a, it's, it's a significant inefficiency. And then there's turnover. So it's a training ground, and then they go somewhere else. Or they don't make it through probation because they don't understand the training or whatever. It's a highly inefficient way to work. Since the wage study isn't moving forward, this is when I determined, well, then I need an individual to help pick up the additional duties we've picked up. And then also would be trained as a floater for all of the turnover to, to step, be able to step in. Because what's happening is people are being pulled off their jobs. And so the people that are staying are having a difficult time accomplishing their job when they have to jump on other people's job frequently because of the high turnover. So, since the fall, my positions that report to me by either not making it through their probation or resigning, besides for assistant finance director, has turned over over a hundred percent.
So, I just wanna make sure that I understood this correctly. I think you said that this problem might be somewhat solved if we fix the wage problem. Like, the need for an employee is largely based on the fact that we don't have a, you aren't able to retain employees.
I, I can't attract someone already experienced, so when they come in, I have, I have to train them.
And then they leave, it sounds like.
Um, they either don't make it through their probation, or they go to other opportunities.
I'm, I'm just trying to think, another way that we could possibly address this issue is by pushing that wage report or whatever it's called. Yes, no, maybe? Well, you don't have to answer that, I'll just think about it. Thank you.
So no, I had not technically asked for other positions. I always thought maybe another avenue to address it, but that's not happening. So, yeah, this is, I think, the first year that it was officially requested. Page ninety-nine is assessing. Personnel are increasing, again, due to, they have some newer staff members there. Opportunities for merit increases. As you had mentioned earlier, the department requested budget deviates from the city manager's budget because the department had to ask for an appraiser one. What happened, though, I need to make this point, that when the appraiser full-time position was not elevated to city manager's position, what got inserted back into the budget was the part-time appraiser, okay? The assessor is having difficulty finding someone part-time that's qualified and would work out. So that's why he's asking for the, the full-time appraiser. And then contracted services is decreasing about thirteen thousand dollars, and that's due, that's for the personal property contractor, and that's due to the number of people that qualify for exemptions. For having the true cash value below the eighty thousand, again, this is personal property tax, is increasing. So the contractor, the contractor will do less work. So, this is his estimate as, with the reduction would be approximately thirteen thousand.
Just, can you check my math, Ms. Red? So it's about thirty thousand difference between what we have in the current budget and what a full-time budget would be? I'm just looking at the numbers, the five fifty-seven versus requesting from the department versus manager's is five twenty-seven?
Uh, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and the reason that's not so significant, because a part-timer was put back in.
Right, I got it. To make that part-timer a full-timer is about a difference of thirty thousand dollars.
Correct.
Okay.
Ms. Red, does the assessor's office have peaks and valleys, just like the building department does? As people, you know, tear down houses and build new ones or do significant improvements to their homes, does their scope of work, from what you've been able to see, kinda go up and down as well?
It will increase with that. Also, the big thing is housing sales. When the market's hot and there's a lot of different transactions, that increases their workload.
Okay.
Yeah.
But when market goes slower, it goes down, and then, yeah?
Yes, they have fewer transactions to monitor there.
Okay.
Okay, city attorney, page one oh three. They've got some newer staff there, again, so that's why personnel's increasing more than, for more reasons than what we've talked about earlier. Contracted legal services expected to decrease sixty-five thousand dollars due to the civic center litigation winding down. And then the line item for books and subscriptions are increasing a thousand dollars. And that's due to the addition of a drafting assistant module for their legal software. Page one oh six, city clerk's office. There's some new staff in, in that department as well, so there's an increase to allow for some potential merit wage increases. And then temporary wages are increasing seventy-five hundred dollars due to potential for hourly wage increases and additional hours work potentially.
Ms., uh, Commissioner Gibbs?
Does, um, does the temporary rate wages include the, the people who work at the polling? Like, the election?
In the election cost center.
Okay.
And the human resources, page one ten. Again, they have some new staff in there, so there's potential wage merit increases in their personnel costs. Temporary wages are expected to decrease five thousand dollars because they recently filled a full-time position, so they're expecting their part-time costs to decline. Civil service exam decreased ten thousand dollars due to a new fire promotion system that was implemented this year. That included some upfront costs that they're not gonna have to incur next year. And then medical services are expected to decrease ten thousand dollars due to some cost savings for using the My Life Clinic that the city has. And then page one sixteen, Treasury Department. And then a lot of smaller notes in this, I just pulled out for the slide, that their personnel costs are increasing, and basically that's due to switching the allocation for staff on how they spend their time. Between, they've got various functions that get spread between water and sewer, parking system, and then Treasury Office for the most part.
Yep.
And then page one twenty-three. Building maintenance cost center here. Personnel's increasing because the way they're allocating, some DPS workers are thinking there might be slightly more building projects, and I don't know if that's because of the move into the city hall. And then, this is where the facilities manager was budgeted and the department requested. So that's why you'll see. You'll see a difference between, that was on the wrong page. The department requested personnel costs versus the city manager's recommended.
So was, were we promised more information on that, or no?
No, this isn't the time, probably, to talk about that.
Didn't you ask about that, and wasn't there some talk about? There's a plan?
Well, yeah, but, I mean, the idea, they, they considered it this year and decided not to do it.
So there's no more, maybe I thought I heard there was, we're gonna hear more at that time, but maybe I'm.
No, I don't think so. I think we need to consider it at some future time, but I'm not necessarily gonna make the case now.
Okay, but Mr. Johnson didn't have anything, no? Okay.
Nope.
I misremembered.
Okay, ordinance enforcement, page one twenty-six. They've got a new staff member there, so there's an opportunity for wage increase, merit wage increase. Telephone services increasing four thousand dollars due to utilizing tablets and training. And education is decreasing eight hundred dollars. And then the motor pool is increasing four thousand based on increased utilization, because they have a, a new employee.
I have a question.
Question, Prush?
The last time we talked to Jason, who is having trouble filling positions, finding positions just because of wages. It's a really competitive market, and he was just having real difficulty. Is that another area where potentially our wage structure is hindering our ability to hire qualified people?
That's more so on the building side than the code enforcement side.
Okay.
There, on the building side, you're, you're dealing with, the pool of candidates that you're looking at are also candidates that are looking at jobs in the construction industry as well.
Yeah.
So when we're in a very go-go building economy like we are right now, it gets to be very difficult.
Okay.
What he's been able to do with the ordinance enforcement, he's got a couple retired police officers. So that has been a source of attracting good candidates.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, community development on page one thirty-three. Just real quick, it's got a new planner, too. That position's only been filled for probably about five months, so you see a pretty big increase in personnel costs because of that position being filled for the entire year when you're looking at the estimated actual for eighteen-nineteen versus the budget. And then contracted services decreasing two hundred thousand dollars due to the master plan update being eliminated as a priority during the city commission strategic planning discussions.
Look at us, save money.
Hurry, get off this page, or she comes back.
We could circle back to it.
Circle the back. Quickly.
Page one thirty-five. We'll try to remember. This is not significant, but I just, I put this on here just to remind everyone that this is happening. Because we've, actually, I don't think we talk about it very often. Animal control services are expected to increase fifteen hundred dollars, and that's just an anticipated contract increase with the city of Berkeley. I don't believe we have any known requested increase at this time. I don't think, yeah, so this is just, we just threw this out. Hopefully, they're not watching, so they know.
Just be clear, this isn't the cost of the animal shelter, it's, it's the contract with, with Berkeley.
Yeah.
Are, are we gonna be talking about the animal shelter tonight?
Hope not.
I'll be meeting with the committee tomorrow, is there a page I should turn to first?
Oh, yeah. It begins on two thirty-five.
Two thirty-five?
Mm-hmm. And let me just, yeah, let me just mention something since you're meeting with them. In order to balance the budget, if you look at the bottom of page two thirty-five, because I cannot deliver to the city commission a request to adopt a budget in a deficit position. So, in the nineteen-twenty budget, how you see, they're gonna use forty-one thousand dollars. Do you see that in red? In the very bottom of the page. Yep, see the red?
Yeah.
Okay. What that does, that's assume they cut expenditures. We had to cut some of their, some of their budget in order to not put the ending fund balance in red. Okay? So if you look at fiscal year eighteen-nineteen, you see revenue a hundred and twenty-three thousand, right? Then you see expenditures a hundred and forty-four thousand. That is really what they need next year. I had to cut it to a hundred and twenty-eight thousand because they're using up forty-one thousand dollars, that's almost all their money. So this isn't really what they need, okay? I had to actually work on cutting some of the line items, whether they're right or wrong. I just had to cut them in order to deliver a fund that was not in a deficit position. I can't deliver a budget to you that bring, puts a fund in a deficit position, okay? So that, those expenditures really need to be higher if they're gonna operate the way they operated this year. They need an eighteen-nineteen.
Are, are you saying that that would need to be one forty-four, or thereabouts?
Yeah, if they were gonna operate the same way.
As opposed to one twenty-eight?
Yep, yeah.
No, 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 that's expenditures, we want the other number to go up. We want, we want eighty-seven to go to one twenty-three.
Yeah, now, now the, the, and I know this is not the, the night for this, I, I'm just curious as to the forty-five thousand dollar difference there in revenues.
Yeah, um, the, a big part of that was the golf outing contribution. So, they're not, they're planning not to provide the entire golf outing money next year. There's a big part of that, not all of it, but a big part of it. Sorry, they're budgeting, I shouldn't say planning.
We raised a little money for the shelter, so we have a little bit coming there this week.
Oh, okay.
Might want to adjust it. Just kidding.
I might.
Not much to adjust it.
So.
Mr. Douglas?
Mr. Prush asked earlier about areas in the budget that are, that are underfunded that may be candidates for foundation spending. This could very well be one of them.
Is this the litmus test you're talking about? Because there's so many different philanthropic contributions made to the animal shelter from little kids collecting dollars at school to whatever. That would be kind of like a, a fund, versus sewer cleaning?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it, it has a wide fundraising appeal.
Right. Mr. Prush?
But to follow up on that, it would be okay then just to say, okay, as, as a foundation, we're gonna give you forty thousand dollars so you can balance your budget? Or, does it have to be more specific? We're gonna give you forty thousand dollars so that you can put on a new roof? Not that that's what, but anyway, something like that. Does it have to be more specific? Or can it just be, okay, we're gonna give you forty thousand dollars in cash so you can balance your budget?
It's gonna be more specific. It's, I mean, I, the foundation, just as we've talked about, the, the challenges of funding staff position over time. The foundation isn't gonna be in a position to fund ongoing operating expenses. It's going to be doing special projects, I predict.
Okay, all right, that helped, that's very helpful.
Engineering cost center, page one forty. Engineering Cost Center, page 140. Staff, or excuse me, personnel costing is slightly higher than the original budget, but not by much. But they continue to believe they're going to have the same level of plan review and permitting work, and then, which receives money to the general fund. And then miscellaneous contracted services are decreasing 70,000 due to an environmental sustainability plan project that was carried over from the prior year, but not, not needed in 1920.
Commissioner Macy?
Two questions. One from Commissioner Douglas. Would environmental sustainability projects be the type of thing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And then for Commissioner Dubak, this might be a fun place to start spending money on getting, putting this plan into place.
Is that a question?
That's all, that is just a suggestion.
Page 152.
Is this 152?
Miscellaneous operating supplies are increasing about $11,000 to purchase a studio recorder, subscribing to Apple and Roku for a dedicated WROK channel and various network storage solutions. Budget also includes $7,500 for a maintenance agreement for the city's web streaming appliances, video on-demand service and playback system. And then capital outlay is decreasing $50,000 due to the capital project that was in the current year's budget for the repairs for the undercarriage of the cable truck, which was not being performed. And alternative options to the repair of the truck are being investigated. And then the final Cost Center that I was going to cover, oh, you know what, did I skip? I'm sorry, I skipped Community Promotions on page 154. I do want to cover this because there's a large item in this. Royal Oak Youth Services continues to be budgeted for $20,000 as in prior years. I want to just make sure that's okay with everybody. And then Star House costs are increasing, about $1,300 for some building improvements. $1,500 is budgeted for branded rugs for different city facilities. And then $100,000 is budgeted for the roof replacement at Fire Station Museum. Two years ago, we had it in the budget, however bids came back very high, and it was not replaced, so he's, Mr. Rassell's going to try again at $100,000. And then $3,000 is budgeted for parade contributions for Memorial Day and the Veterans Day rec march.
Commissioner Douglas?
Technically, it's Royal Oak Youth Assistance, not Royal Oak Youth Services.
Okay. I was going to ask, the way you phrase that made me think that maybe we should be wondering about that number. Has someone proposed for, or asked for more than 20,000, or...
I have not been asked for more than 20,000.
Yes, Commissioner Douglas, please.
So Royal Oak Youth Assistance receives $60,000 a year, 20,000 from the city, 20,000 from the schools, and 20,000 from the county. And it, that has long been the case. And in fact, you know, we have, I have in fact encouraged them to seek more funding from the city, but I think they want to, if they're going to get more from the city, they want to go to the schools and the courts and make sure that, you know, they are giving more as well. And I don't know that there's, there's a stomach for that.
Okay.
But it's not that we haven't considered it.
They're not seeking for us to lead by example?
Um, no.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, and the last slide for the general fund, page 158. Transfers are decreasing in this year, sorry, 1920, due to a one-time transfer of nearly $4 million to the Rock Capital Fund in 1819. $21 million is budgeted to be transferred to the Public Safety Fund, that's $2 million additional relative to the current year. Again, $350,000 is budgeted to be transferred to the Senior Citizens Fund to offset operating costs, $466,000 for the court debt, 2.2 million for the debt service payment that goes to the debt service fund. And then $22,000 again for the commission for the arts and Memorial Day Parade. And then the 22, 210 is for our match on the MIDC Indigent Defense Fund.
This is also where I would like to add 600,000 for Normandy Oaks.
Yep. And with anticipation of the, you know, basically forwarding the...
Yeah.
Bring forward the Oakland County...
So that we can do that whole project.
Yeah, it makes sense. I mean, you get that utility all front and you get paid on the back end. Commissioner Dubak?
I'm just curious about process for that. So at our next meeting, would you bring resolutions, or would you want one of us to make a motion to that effect?
Well, I think, would you amend it?
You'd bring an amended, you'd make that amendment, the final version that we'll do the hearing on?
Yeah, well, I would bring it to you to get at least a sense of a commission, if not preferably a vote, so that I know that you want it included in the final budget.
So you'd do that at the next special budget meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, we would be saving money doing that, you know?
Well, I don't, wouldn't go for a, we're saving money.
Well, construction costs are going up, 5% every year.
You're right about that. You're right about that. A lot of this project isn't concrete.
That's true. Commissioner Macy?
So I guess my first question is, why don't we just do it now?
Again?
I'd like to make a motion to add 600,000.
Motion by Commissioner Macy, for a second. Thank you, Commissioner Dubak. And just to clarify, you said you'd like to make a motion, not a commode.
I'd like to make a motion.
And this motion is to...
I'd like to make a motion to add 600,000 to, transfer 600,000 to the, tell, Don, help me here.
Can we see that eyebrow sign again?
I don't know if I can do it again.
Normandy Oaks?
600,000, it's not its own fund, though, is it? Transfer...
Parks Capital.
To the Parks Capital Fund to pay for the Normandy Oaks, completion of Phase 1 that will later be, it's like a, you know, do I have to say more?
For by the county.
That will be paid for by the, will be paid back by the county in the, in the future payments for this.
Discussion?
Somebody write that up correctly, Melanie.
And just to be very clear, I think it's already been stated, but, but this is something, we already have the anticipated revenue coming in from the county to pay for this. We're simply looking to...
But it will be over three years from the county, it's not...
Over three years, it's, it's all about what, what we're doing here is simply making the improvement now, instead of doing it piecemeal over the course of three years.
Yes.
And we're getting, we're getting a million over the course of three years.
Yes.
Yeah. I have an unrelated question.
Discussion?
So, I mean, it says here that the total transfers are decreasing due to a one-time transfer of nearly 4 million, but it looks like they're only decreasing a little bit, right? I mean, where's, they're still quite, only decreasing by 2 million.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So it's increasing mostly due to the public safety, that's 2 million, but there was a one time, so we're getting net the two.
All right.
Okay. Any other discussion? With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. I will note that with that expenditure, we're probably near 25%.
Yeah, right.
Are we opposed?
Yeah, we're under.
We're under 25%.
Perfect.
There you go, Melanie Macy.
I'm so happy.
See?
Problem solved.
Problem solved. We'll hear no more discussion on that topic.
Are you sure?
I am sure. If my calculator works correctly on my iPhone...
This budget will come back and will still be over 25%. You're in here first.
As long as you want.
All right, that's our general fund, and I know the question that's coming up, I hear it from Commissioner Perush. How much further do we have left to go tonight? I see other?
Yeah, we can stop here. What's other?
Do we, do we want, do we want to, I mean, chief, are you going to be here for the next budget meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's not irrelevant to you, but it's not asking you to come a second time to talk about your budget?
Correct.
Okay.
And there aren't any department heads lurking in the back room, so...
Right.
We sort of can't do their stuff if they're not here.
What is other supposed to be?
I mean, the only other thing I think we could do is maybe the police.
Well, the thought was we could go in and do the police one, particularly the, the discussion about the system that we're proposing for videos.
Well, let's not do that at 10:30 at night, people won't hear about that.
No, agreed.
Okay. So, other, is there anything other than anything would like, anyone would like to talk about tonight or add? I would ask that for the things that we have discussed this evening, we want to avoid any sort of miscommunication, misunderstanding like we had last year, okay? So, you know, I just want to make sure, does everyone have any issues? If you have things that you want to add to what we've already discussed, things you want to delete, or things you want to add or delete for the ones we're going to discuss in the future, if those questions and issues, as you peruse it in the next couple days in more detail, you can get those to Ms. Rudd and Mr. Johnson, so...
If it's going to be stuff about adding or deleting dollar things from the budget, you need to discuss it together and provide group direction.
That's right, Mr. Johnson, I'm not finished yet.
Okay.
So, but it allows them to prepare and have the questions answered, and, you know, we're not getting to a point where we get to a third meeting or whatever, and then all of a sudden these things come out and it's chaos. So it's helpful for staff. If we have any questions or anything, that way we can have meaningful conversation here.
I see.
You on board? Okay. I don't see anyone shaking their head, no.
Also, if there are any particular departments that you would like to see present at the next meeting. Right now, the only one that we're really planning to have here is Greg and Corey.
Who's, okay.
Commissioner Douglas?
Well, I would like to make sure that Greg is fully prepared to talk about the senior center. I mean, we're looking at this $350,000 general fund transfer. I know that the results of the Aging in Place Task Force aren't likely to have a financial impact in a significant amount in the coming year, but I really want to make sure that we're prepared to, to talk about our senior services to see if there are things that we need to be doing there that we're not doing in the short term.
Commissioner Macy?
I'd just like to say that pushing back slightly on what the mayor just said is that we received this budget on Monday, and we're looking at it now for the, in depth for the first time, and things do come up at the table. So I hope that the commission is also able to do some of that thought work while we're here together, and it doesn't have to be planned in advance, because as Mr. Johnson says, this is something we need to be discussing as a body. So sending questions in advance...
Yeah, we're going to discuss it as a body, but if you know of something, don't wait, you know, to the day of the meeting if you need additional information, or you have a question about, like, tonight, everything was fine. I mean, you had a question about voting machines, you probably didn't have a chance since you got this budget on Monday to talk to Ms. Halas, that's understandable. But now that we have a few days ahead of us, as you're reviewing it, if something pops up as a courtesy...
Commissioner Macy's already been doing that.
See? What are you worried about? You're already getting extra credit on your homework, come on.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Commissioner Vasor?
Yeah, not that I want to get into any extensive discussion tonight, but, but one issue that I've had is the level of DDA contribution to the public safety. I know we have like 550 or something in that ballpark that comes in, and then there's going to be some that's just generated through, through tax revenue. But, but the question I have is whether that figure is sufficient, given the resources that the DDA area requires from public safety, and that's going to be something I want to discuss.
Mr. Perush?
Can I just add on to that, especially in light of the number of events that happen within the downtown area? You know, you have Art's Beats and Eats, and all kinds of art fairs, and all kinds of everything else. I guess, given the level of, it, it just seems to me that those are increasing, and we have a lot of police presence at a lot of those events, and therefore, I think it's appropriate to see whether or not that's a sufficient amount of money, given the amount of events that just keep, kind of keep increasing, and it puts additional demands on the department. Not only, not only police, but also fire EMS, and maybe, maybe even public works to the extent that they're barricading and, and so on and so forth.
Well, you know, we've also increased, and we will be increasing, our daytime foot traffic, so we're having thousands of more employees now all in the downtown and the central business district that have persistent, stolen heart attacks.
Right. And certainly the, the event organizers are contractually obligated to reimburse us for a lot of those costs, but I guess I just want to be sure that, given all of that, when you crunch all of the numbers, that, that what we've got is adequate, based on what the departments are seeing.
I will adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas. We have seconded by Commissioner Gibbs. Any discussion on this important motion?
Before, before we wrap up, I want to just verify that we're, our next meeting is May 23 at 6:30 PM, correct? Because we've had, moved the other ones to 7:30, partly to accommodate me, I appreciate that, but...
Is it 6:30, or we moved that one to 7:30?
No.
I see it on 6:30 on my calendar.
It is 6:30.
And then the following week, should we need it, is that, I'm sorry, June 3 is at 7:30?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
But I do second that motion.
You did?
I did.
Okay. That's a two-for-one hand raise. All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Adjourned.